Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability is now in session.
Good morning, everybody. This is the final day of the 19th Public Hearing of the Royal Commission, dealing with the measures taken by employers and regulators to respond to the systemic barriers to open employment for people with disability. We commence, as always, with the acknowledgement of country. We acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora nation on whose traditional lands Commissioner Ryan and I are presently sitting. We also acknowledge the Warungjiri people of the Kulin nation upon whose lands Commissioner Galbulay is sitting in Melbourne. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. We also pay respects to all First Nations people who are participating in or who may be following this hearing. Yes, Miss Bennet?
Thank you, Chair. The first witness this morning is Miss Christina Ryan, the Chief Executive Officer and founder of the Disability Leadership Institute. Could Miss Ryan be led into the virtual room?
Yes, we'll just wait for Miss Ryan to come on to the screen. Good morning, Miss Ryan. Thank you very much for coming again to the Royal Commission. You probably know where we're all located, but just to reiterate, Commissioner Galbulay is in Melbourne. I'm in the Sydney Hearing Room with Commissioner Ryan on my right. Miss Bennet, Senior Counsel, is present also in the Sydney Hearing Room. And I will now ask Miss Bennet to ask you some questions, but thank you again for assisting the Royal Commission.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. And Miss Ryan, before we begin, I just want to frame your evidence in terms of where you come in the proceedings, because Commissioners, this week you've heard the evidence from a range of witnesses about the barriers that people with a disability face in employment. And the week was commenced hearing from Mr Graham Innis, who identified barriers like attitudinal barriers, structural barriers, physical barriers, organisational barriers, to name a few. The evidence this week, Commissioners, has explored those issues. And as I said at the beginning, Miss Ryan is the CEO of the Disability Leadership Institute. She's a leader in this space and her evidence today is focused on identifying key areas for change. And so with that very brief introduction, which by no means identifies the breadth and depth of Miss Ryan's experience, Miss Ryan, I'd like to talk to you directly about those key changes. Before I do that, can you just remind the Commissioners and those watching who you are and what your organisation does?
Sure. Thank you, Miss Bennet. As you've said, I'm the CEO of the Disability Leadership Institute, which I founded in 2016, and I've been doing that for five years. I'll make it clear at the outset that I identify as a disabled person. I have come from a long background of work in the community sector. I recommenced my paid work about 20 years ago as part of the Sector Development Team at the ACT Council of Social Service, providing management consulting, adult learning and development for the entire community sector workforce in the ACT. I also provided advice on governance, management, human rights, implementation, human resources and charitable entity structure amongst other things. And of course interconnected with the COS network around the country, providing a detailed view of workforce issues and pressures. Ultimately, I led that sector development team as one of ATCOS's deputy directors. Prior to this current role, I was the CEO of Advocacy for Inclusion for eight and a half years, which is an NDEP-funded organisation, the National Disability Advocacy Programme. And Advocacy for Inclusion provides individual self and systemic advocacy to disabled people in the ACT. I also sat on the board of the national peak body at the time, the Disability Advocacy Network of Australia, for four years during this period, including 18 months as the Chair. I've represented women with disabilities on the NGO delegation to the SEDAL Treaty Reporting Process, the Women's Rights Treaty, and on the Australian delegation at the Commission on the Status of Women, both at the United Nations in New York. I also attended the CoAG Summit addressing violence against women in 2016 as one of three disabled delegates. In 2017, I was awarded a Westpac Social Change Fellowship when I was establishing the DLI, which I used to examine diversity structures, what worked, what didn't, with a view to understanding where disability diversity sat and what might assist in progressing this underdeveloped area. I'm now a leadership coach and I provide professional development programmes to disability leaders, including a supportive community of practice through the Disability Leadership Institute. I also do professional speaking engagements, including regular appearances in the media conference panels and keynote addresses. I'll make it clear that the DLI is not a representative organisation, nor do we provide systemic advocacy. We are a professional development organisation.
I'm sorry, Miss Ryan, I'm deeply sorry to interrupt. I've just received a note to ask if the interpreters would be assisted if you could slow down even so slightly. No, and please, Miss Ryan, I'm very keen that as many people as possible hear your evidence. And we're in no rush and I'm very keen that people hear what you have to say. So please, I'm sorry to have interrupted your flow, but please continue.
Thank you, Miss Bennet. It's the end of a long week for me and you as well. I'm sure we're all very tired. As I was saying, the DLI is not a representative organisation, nor do we provide systemic advocacy. So my statement is based on professional experience, my observations and communications with disability leaders over several years, and I'm here to share my expertise. Just a small insight into the DLI. It was founded to address the ongoing lack of disability leadership development programmes in Australia. It now has members in over 20 countries. And during the establishment phase, it quickly became clear that there was no ongoing leadership development options for disability leaders globally. So in 2016, the DLI undertook the first survey of disability leaders to better understand their experiences and aspirations. This survey showed a few key outcomes. That leaders with disabilities are operating almost entirely under their own resources and within their own circles of engagement. Many established leaders are regularly mentoring several emerging leaders to ensure some continuity for leaders with disabilities over time. There was little executive management training and support. Most had been gained on the job. Training and development for leaders with disabilities is ad hoc, with no particular consistency in training received by anyone who completed the survey across governance, management or community representation roles. There was no specialist disability leadership training mentioned by any of the respondents. There was no evidence that either public or private sector employers had targeted people with disabilities as leaders and provided training or leadership coaching to progress their careers. My Westpac Fellowship the following year confirmed this. Fifty-five per cent of respondents to the survey said that any training they received had not led to any leadership opportunities or was irrelevant to the work they had subsequently undertaken in both leadership and representative roles. Seventy per cent of respondents had experienced barriers to undertaking leadership opportunities and development. A particular barrier seemed to be the ablest expectation that leadership is only possible within the current paradigm in which it sits. Leaders with disabilities were expected to operate without consideration that they might do so in a different way to existing norms, not just to accommodate the disability requirements.
Miss Ryan, I think it may be a little more helpful to us if Miss Bennet could ask you some questions, if you don't mind, and if you respond to those questions.
Certainly. Thank you, Chair. I'll just complete a couple of extra points I do understand. The majority of survey respondents considered their leadership work to be a private activity. Even those employed by organisations as leaders were still self-funding the extra costs of their disability. And approximately 60 per cent of these respondents had received awards ranging from academic recognition to Australian of the Year and Order of Australia awards. So that's a summation of that survey that we undertook.
Thank you, Miss Ryan. Oh, no, thank you. And so what I'd like to turn to is is to the key changes that you consider to be available levers to effect change. And as I understand, one recommendation or perhaps key change or lever that you've identified concerns procurement policies. Can you tell the Royal Commission about your views on that topic?
Indeed. I'll just outline that I have clubbed these under three areas of change. And the first one is exploitation. And I do use words like exploitation because I think that we do need to be disrupting this conversation and telling it like it is. I think we've had a week of understanding that as it is, is not necessarily doing the job. So my first recommendation under the exploitation heading is that organisations should be developing disability procurement policies, which specifically state a preference for disability-owned and led businesses. And I don't mean sheltered workshops when I say that. Who are their preferred providers for all disability-related consulting, policy and programme work. We do not know of any disability-specific procurement policies and there are other specific procurement policies to target specific minority groups within the population. For example, the federal government has an Indigenous business procurement policy. So I'm suggesting something along the lines of that.
Is it fair to say that that's targeted at, I think I might be amuse, is that targeted at two separate ideas? First, to encourage the flourishing of those organisations? And second, to encourage cultural change in the organisations with which they engage? So is that a fair summary of what that is directed to?
Yeah, it's a couple of things. One of them is that there's a much higher rate of self-employment in the disability community than in the wider community. This is something we've known for a while, but recent research undertaken by Professor Simon Darcy at the UTS Business School has told us this and illustrated that, you know, disabled people run their own businesses. We set up businesses and are self-employed. Some of those are sole trader consultancies. Many are actually employing numbers of other disabled people, including the Disability Leadership Institute, for example. And at the moment, it's a very tough market to break into for disability-led businesses. But something else that is almost an ongoing cultural assumption, I think we could call it, is that disabled people work for free or for very low money. And so there's often an assumption that these people will be available to support big consulting firms, for example, who gain government contracts, or available for private organisations, including service providers, for free, pro bono, when of course, one of the longstanding imperatives of governments over many, many decades has been that to increase the levels of disability employment. That's why we're here this week, of course. And this is almost completely runs counter to this assumption that disabled people should work for free, particularly when we're working for ourselves and are using our expertise and qualifications. And so a disability procurement policy would not just be a leadership example, but it would also carry the message that employing disabled people happens in multiple ways. And the expectation that disabled people should be paid for their time becomes more of a cultural assumption than the current expectation, which is that many of us are available pro bono, or indeed for the distribution of gift cards, which is still a very common practice as well.
Yes. So that's addressing the practical, being the paying people properly for their work and expertise and the cultural embedding and displacing an unconscious perhaps bias in favour of asking people to give their time for free or not recognising the value of the work. Is that what that key change is directed to?
I think it is. And, you know, just to be brutally frank about it, I think there's often an assumption that we're just glad to be, you know, called on, to be got out of the house, you know, when in reality, many of us are very busy and, you know, a couple of weeks ago, one of my members at the DLI was asked to participate in a video project for a large service provider. They were clearly paying the video maker, but they expected her to be providing her time for free. She runs her own consulting business, so that means she's taking time out from her work to be supporting them in their marketing without any suggestion that she should have been paid. When she asked for payment, when she said, "My time isn't free, here's what it will cost", they decided that she wasn't what they were after. So she didn't go ahead with making the video with them.
And so this is, I think, connected with another area of key change that you've identified, which is that policies be developed along these lines in organisations, including government. Can you tell us what policies of that kind would be directed to?
Indeed. And this is a community-wide response that we could make, is that we develop policies across all organisations, not dissimilar to some of the modern slavery policies that many organisations have now developed around procurement, which talk about how disabled people will be engaged for their expertise, for whatever work it is, speaking, content generation, which outlines the payment protocols, including the assumption that all people should be paid for their expertise and time. I think governments have a leadership role to play in this, but I think it's also something our private sector needs to be doing. And as I've said, you know, there's currently, when I am a supplier for a large organisation, I am required to fill in multiple annual surveys to remain a supplier, which talk about how the DLI has responded to the problem of modern slavery and how we are addressing it, what policies we have in place. But there is no similar policy around the payment or the expectation that the expertise and advice of disabled people will be something that that organisation pays for. So policies that talk about that. This also cuts into the one that I've already mentioned, the policy of using gift cards as payment, which is something that I seem to advise organisations on every week about how they can avoid doing this. You know, there are very few people who don't want to be paid for their time. And even though there are arguments around the difficulties this might present to people who live solely on the disability support pension, I am yet to meet a single person on the disability support pension who is not interested in earning income, a fair and just income for their work. So we need to address this area. We need to make sure that there's not only a policy around paying people, but there's disability procurement policies that back it up to make it a preferred way of injecting expertise into organisations.
And again, it seems, to place that in the context of this week, these are policies that have the effect of enabling disability-led organisations to flourish and that creates cultural change within the organisations that go on to themselves employ people with disability as one key change to shift that attitudinal barrier that we've been hearing about this week. Is that your view, Miss Ryan?
I think it is. We also need to be aware with that higher level of self-employment. You know, perhaps disabled people work a bit differently and that's fine. You know, that's the glory of disability diversity. That's what we want. And so we want to be recognising as a society that that is not just valid but valued and that it will be something that people are able to consistently sustain over time. It will provide a leadership example over time for those organisations who want to increase their internal disability workforce. Because the presence of disabled people in the space, but particularly as valued expertise from outside, will illustrate how disability is valued by that organisation and the diversity that it brings.
And that can lead, can it not, to a culture where people with a disability might feel safer with that organisation, to see it leading by example or actually putting its money where its mouth is, to put it simply. Is that part of your aim in making these kinds of, putting forward these ideas?
Hopefully over time. Let's be careful about not seeing this as a silver bullet. Valuing people is the first step in equality, I think. And so valuing disabled people is the first step in illustrating that we think, you know, this particular part of our community, this disability community is valuable. What they have to say as speakers, as consultants, as advisors is useful and we treat it as any other external expertise. So that is the starting point. It won't be the silver bullet that changes internal culture. There's multiple other factors that we probably need to add to that.
And I'd like to move to some of the other factors. I think the next item that you were to address related to recruitment, which is something we've heard a lot about this week and about the barriers that people with disability can face in getting through the door. And I'm very interested to hear what key changes you've identified in that space. So I think research and tracking data are two areas that you've identified as important. And I'm very interested to hear your views about how data and tracking can be used in an appropriate and respectful way in organisations.
I'm always interested in data. It's interesting how little of it is collected around disabled people. And often an excuse is provided that people will be offended if they're asked if they're disabled or not. I don't think so. I think, you know, if there's a box to tick, are you disabled or not disabled? You know, it's as simple as that. We do it for gender, we do it for cultural diversity, we do it for First Nations people. So let's do it for disability. The thing that we don't have is a really good picture about how disability employment is travelling. We have data from some organisations, not all, and it's not necessarily quality data around the numbers of disabled people in organisations. We have that from two sources. We have the open identified people and we have the anonymous survey data. What we really need is to understand how many people are staying with an organisation, how long they're there and what levels they achieve. So are they coming in at entry level and staying there or are they moving up over time? Are they coming in and leaving six months later? And we know an awful lot of people who do do that, which is a really solid indicator of the work safety environment, I would suggest. So we need data on, you know, people coming into organisations, but also what happens to them once they get there. And we need that to be shared in annual reports. We need to know that organisations that are receiving government funding or contracts are actually providing this information to government as part of their contractual obligations. And I reiterate the suggestions of Robyn Banks, who appeared the other day in that regard. I think there's a very big gap in this space and I think it would be useful data to provide insight for organisations into what's going on. Are they managing to retain people? Or is there a revolving door? And particularly in the more senior echelons of organisations, where we have strong anecdotal evidence that openly identifying as disabled is an extraordinarily risky thing to do, the more senior you are.
Miss Ryan, we've heard some evidence this week from organisations who say that the voluntary nature of disclosure makes that very difficult. Is that your experience, that the voluntary nature of disclosure makes that very difficult? Or is it a matter of culture again?
I'm going to call that one out as an excuse. I think it's straight up an excuse. When people know that they are valued for their disability and they're not simply a number that's helping percentages, they have a reason to be openly disabled in their workplace. At the moment, there's not a hell of a lot of reason to be openly disabled if you can somehow conceal it. So this will shift when it's a valuable thing to be a disabled person, when you are valued for your diversity, when you're recognised for bringing something more to the organisation than a box to tick. So it's an excuse to suggest that people will be disadvantaged in some way if they're not openly identifying. In fact, providing a reason to openly identifying might shift the dial for a few people.
Thank you, Miss Ryan. You also, I'd like to talk for a moment about merit and its role in recruitment. Tell us about, does it have a role?
No, I think it should be chucked out the window. Merit needs to go. And I know that many organisations pride themselves on appointing on merit. I'm going to refer to a report that was put together by the Male Champions of Change and the Chief Executive Women a few years ago, 2016, 2017. And they investigated this concept of merit. Now, let's admit, they're looking at gender. That's their gig. But fundamentally, we're all talking about diversity. And what the now-called Champions of Change and the Chief Executive Women discovered is that merit is a trap. When we appoint people on merit, we end up with people who look like we do. So they come from the same background, the same networks, the same education, a similar-looking CV, so the same types of organisations that they've moved through on the way to their current role. Fundamentally, it's a really good way of not getting diverse people into your organisation, of whatever kind. And so merit is a problem. It's not a solution. And everybody likes to think they're appointing on merit. What they are doing is appointing in a narrow-caste space, which is basically repeating their existing workforce. So we need to discard merit as a recruitment criterion in favour of more holistic recruitment practices. Deloitte put out a report at the beginning of 2019, which identified that competence is what needs to be the factor. At the moment, confidence is often what gets people through an interview process and we need to look at competence. So if we chuck merit out the window and start looking at competence, does this person have a track record? Can they do the job? Are they able to move into it with some level of proficiency, given that everybody has a settling-in period? This will assist with diversity, but it will also recognise that disabled people might have a very different path to employment to other people. And we see this across many diversity areas. So, you know, people aren't necessarily going to come through the same schools, the same networks, the same opportunities and the same CV. Across all manner of cultural differences, across gender, we know it's different. And we also need to recognise that disability is one of those factors. So we need to look not at formal qualifications. Obviously, you need to be a barrister to be here today, so that's one you have to have. And you need to be a doctor to be in a room. But we need to look beyond formal qualifications to looking at competence to do the job. And I'm going to cite a particular example here. And that's Qantas's international pilots. Alan Joyce is one of the male champions. He actually introduced this report when I first became aware of it. And he said they made a decision to go differently on how they recruit international pilots. Because if they kept going the way they were going, there would never be any women international pilots for Qantas. I'll now highlight the fact, only a few years later, the chief pilot at Qantas is a woman. And that's because they made a decision to shift how they recruit people. Nobody's suggesting that these pilots are not highly competent people. Qantas isn't going to risk their safety reputation. So it's not about taking a lower-hanging fruit. It's about how you take people into the organisation and how you move them through the organisation into the positions that you want. We need to get rid of merit. It's a barrier. It's causing us problems.
Are you really seeking to discard merit or are you redefining merit? This is something that has been a debate, for example, in the United Kingdom in terms of appointments to judicial office. Nobody suggests that the concept of merit should be removed for the reasons you give. You don't want to have someone flying an aeroplane who's going to fly it into a mountain.
Exactly.
With a certain minimum technical competence that is required. But the concept of merit can be broadened, can it not, to include the sort of things that you're referring to?
Perhaps it's become distracted into meaning something that it really doesn't.
Yes.
And that is, you must have this particular, you know, what we see, for example, is positions advertised and at the bottom it says, "You've got to have a degree in X". And that degree is not necessarily what you need to do this job. And that degree is not necessarily what you need to do this job. It's actually, you need expertise and knowledge in that field. You need an analytical mind that does this and that. But you don't necessarily need, for example, a social work degree to be a policy officer for a community organisation. And yet, social work degrees are insisted on. There are many, many positions in the women's violence sector, and, you know, I've done a lot of work in that space, where that social work degree has prevented incredibly qualified disabled women from even applying for that position. Whereas what they were looking for was someone who's good at policy, knows the area very well and is able to understand what the change-making needs to look like in that space. So there are certain qualifications that are required, as you say, for certain expertise areas, like the law, like medicine. But many, many, many areas do not require these. And I think one that we could look at, for example, is it's very hard to get into the public sector anywhere these days, across all public sectors, unless you've got a degree in something. Why? What's that about? And you don't necessarily use your degree. I've known people who are employed based on an agriculture degree, when in fact they're employed as something completely different. So what we're talking about is we want people who are competent at analysing problems, at writing, at how they put and construct arguments, those sorts of things. So we need to think about this differently. And merit has become almost a catchphrase of recruiters, particularly professional recruitment firms. And I think it's a distraction, it's getting in the way. What they did at Qantas was they went out and sought women who are experienced in STEM, the Science, Technology, Engineering and Maths Sciences, from universities. They directly found women from universities in these fields and shipped them straight into the Qantas Engineering Division. So they learnt about planes from the ground up.
That's right.
I think that's a good way to put it.
I think so, but, you know, it's not. It's not how most international pilots actually come through from Air Force pilots. That's apparently the main pathway.
It's very similar to what happens in the Aboriginal indigenous employment area.
I think that you'd agree, Ms Ryan, that there are areas of intersectionality here.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
There's always intersectionality in disability. It is a highly intersectional space. We can learn a lot from other diversity areas. And I think a big thing to really talk about today, particularly under this heading of recruitment, is there's almost a reinventing of the wheel in disability. You know, we've become obsessed with coming up with new ways. And why don't we learn from the successes in other diversity areas? You know, the other intersectional spaces, because there's a lot to be learned, not just from First Peoples, there's an awful lot to learn from there. But, you know, gender, culturally diverse people, et cetera. So we should be, instead of reinventing the wheel and setting up endless working parties and committees, let's ship across some useful techniques and fit them to purpose. And I think merit's a really good one of them. The merit trap is a really good heads-up in that space.
Thank you, Ms Ryan. Now, I want to make sure I don't miss out any of the key changes that you want to talk about today. So I'm going to move to, I think you wanted to talk about leadership in disability-led organisations. Do you have, have you identified areas for change in those spaces?
I'm going to recommend that there need to be identified disability positions. We have these in other areas. We've been talking about First Peoples areas this morning. Recently, the head of the Torres Strait Regional Authority was advertised, the CEO. It's a six-figure salary of government statutory agency. It's an identified position. Only a First Nations person can be the head of that authority. And yet, we have nothing like that in disability that I'm aware of. So the CEO of the NDIS, for example, would potentially be one of those positions. The heads of the various offices for disability around the country. But we also need to think about things like service providers. You know, anyone who's disability-focused should be considering whether they have a disability-identified position in these spaces. But we also need to start moving broader into the private sector and perhaps thinking about how diversity officers and some of those sorts of areas need to be identified as disability-specific positions as well.
And that leads into, I think, your third area, which is safe workplaces. I think you've termed it. And you identify the need for employers to take responsibility for the provision of adjustments, rather than expecting employees to advocate around those issues. And I'd like to just draw out, if I can, is one of the things you're identifying there, for example, specific officers or people who have responsibility for those issues in private organisations, is that something that you're looking to identify?
I think so. I've actually called this section assimilation as well. I'm just going to use the word. And I've used that quite specifically. I know it's a confronting word, I accept that. Because people with disabilities are in a position where we find ourselves trying to look non-disabled or act non-disabled to fit in. So when we're talking in this particular area, we're talking about that dilemma. And it means that we're not safe. We don't feel safe. My recommendations are quite specific in this area. You know, many disabled people find themselves continuously advocating around not just their own workplace adjustments and requirements, but around other disabled people in the workplace. It must go back on to the employer to be responsible for this. Whether it's accessing job access and making sure that process is followed through, that's a very simple example. Or whether it's taking responsibility for harassment. And we know the very high levels of bullying experienced by disabled people in the workplace, which have been researched and shown to be at least double that of other people. Some agencies I've spoken to say that their figures show three or four times the levels of bullying than non-disabled staff. We need employers to take responsibility for stopping these things from happening. We need them to be stepping in. We need employers to be making sure that adjustments are made and that people actually have what they need, that they don't spend six months waiting for the software, waiting for the particular piece of hardware or waiting for something to happen. Prepare, make it happen in advance, follow it up, take responsibility from the top, from the top.
And speaking of the top, I think the last area for change that you identify concerns specialist disability leadership programmes in the private sector. I think we were talking before a bit about the public sector. But can you tell the Royal Commission about what you see as an area of opportunity around targeted leadership programmes in the private sector?
Well, actually, across all sectors.
I'm sorry, thank you.
I'm unaware of any across any sectors at all, to be frank. And this is something that was shown, not just in our survey in 2016, but during my fellowship in 2017. Most organisations had not even thought about it. It hadn't even occurred to them. And yet, they were running women's leadership programmes. They were running, about half of them were running indigenous leadership programmes. Increasingly, they were running culturally diverse folk leadership programmes. And yet, nothing anywhere that was about leadership programmes that were suitable specifically for disabled people and that supported disabled people to learn in a safe environment where they were able to be open about their, not just their leadership, but how they do their leadership. So we do need to be growing this space. Clearly, the DLI is doing it, and this is not a plug for us, but, you know, clearly we're doing it. We're doing it because it isn't being done anywhere and it needs to be. This should be a very large industry and yet there's barely anything happening. And I'm still only aware of one organisation, because I'm delivering it, who has an in-house disability leadership programme. I think this will change the dial. When we talked earlier about openly identifying, this is the sort of thing that becomes a carrot, if you like, an attractive option for someone to then become open about their disability because they want to take part in this.
Ms Ryan, I've enjoyed our discussion this morning. I'm going to hand you over to the commissioners to see if they have any questions for you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ms Ryan. Commissioner Galbally, do you have any questions, Ms Ryan?
First of all, to thank you very much, you know, that was so valuable. So picking up the safe workplaces and the issue of adjustments, how do you think that should be made top-down? Like, how can we get the CEOs and the heads of organisations to take that on board?
I think what we've learned from the diversity area generally is when CEOs and executive leadership team people take responsibility, changes happen. And what we see in a lot of examples is that the responsibility for these things is sort of farmed out down the line in a way which means that the CEO can almost, you know, they're not even tracking the data. So we need CEOs to be the ones driving this stuff. And internationally, the organisations that have done well around disability diversity, it's because it's coming from the top. The responsibility, not just for adjustments, but also for making sure the numbers are changing, for making sure people are moving up, that the leadership pathway exists and it's happening, it's effective, and that people stay, that they are valued, rather than, you know, finding their job untenable once their disability becomes known. So, you know, that notion of it coming from the top is really important. Where we've seen the changes in gender balance in organisations, it's because a decision was made right from the top for it to shift. And I'll cite the example of Westpac there. They made a decision that by their bicentenary a couple of years ago, they were going to have 50% women in their leadership and they got there.
So the suggestion that Graham Innes made on Monday to put that into KPIs for, say, secretaries of government departments, so they have to report on it.
Yes.
You would support that?
Absolutely. And what we should also start is that anyone receiving government funds, whether that's a funding agreement or a contract, should be reporting their disability diversity statistics, including that tracking data on where people are sitting and what the pathways are. So that it becomes a KPI, an expectation of doing business with government is reporting on these matters. It also places it back into the responsibility of not just the executive team, but the boards of those organisations to be monitoring, keeping track of it and insisting on change if it isn't happening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Galbally.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Ryan, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms Ryan. What you've said this morning is incredibly perceptive and I must say incredibly innovative by comparison to what I've heard before. I'd be interested in putting a brave proposition to you. You're aware of the fact that the Commonwealth Government, for example, has a proposal to increase disability employment in the Commonwealth sector by 7%. And to be frank about it, it does appear that an enormous amount of the effort is targeted towards getting the existing cohort of people who work for the public sector to re-identify themselves and consequently, nothing actually changes. Would you accept a more modest target, but one which was more effective in bringing additional new recruits into the public sector and investing in them? So that at the end of a period of time, we may not have as large a number, but we might have something that is more visible, more realistic and something which people will find, you know, that there will be actual people who don't have jobs today with all of the competence that they need to work in the public sector. And there will be a decent number of them that people will be able to see and hear. That will mean some change to how the target is described, but it might be more effective.
It's not just the Commonwealth. Numbers of states also have these targets at about the same levels at the moment, 6%, 7%. Actually, I think there's no reason why 15% shouldn't be the target. That's the numbers of disabled people of workforce age in this country. So I think that's what they should be aiming for. But what they need to be doing, in my estimation, is targeting the top. And it is about those leadership programmes. It's about graduate intake, it's about fast-tracking, it's about identifying who's there and making sure we keep them. And I do know of a few agencies, one in particular that I work with a fair bit, but there are others who are shifting the dial because they are making sure that the people, the disabled people who are there are valued, that they are provided with training, that they are known to be future leaders in the organisation. And because of that, more people are feeling comfortable about being disabled in that agency. It's not the silver bullet, like anything is not the silver bullet, but it's these things that will make a difference. And it makes it more attractive to openly identify. So it means those people in the middle echelons are actually going to start thinking, right, oh, there is leadership potential for me and I can be open while I do it. One of the things many people say to us at the DLI, and it came through first in the survey in 2016, but it's still a very common conversation. I can't be more senior than X because my disability isn't going to manage it. So the recognition that management only looks one way, that there won't be flexibility offered, that it isn't safe, that you have to be putting in 50-hour weeks and you'll be in rooms where nobody cares whether you've got captions or not. This is still a very widely-held understanding of what being more and more senior as a disabled person equates to. So it's only when we've got illustrations of that not being the case. So we don't just want people moving into these spaces, we certainly need them. But we also want an understanding that leadership can look different and that it's okay not to be burning out, it's okay not to be working stupid hours, it's okay to have flexibility. We've identified that with women and with maternity leave and child rearing responsibilities. So, you know, what's the problem? I like to be disruptive, Commissioner Ryan, I think it's important. And, you know, what we've been doing for decades isn't working. Same nail, bigger and bigger hammer. We need to chuck out the hammers and the nails and come at this in a different way. I don't think we'll see any change otherwise. I think we'll be here in another three decades having the same conversation. How depressing.
Indeed, indeed. Thank you so much for your evidence, it's been very interesting.
Thank you.
Insightful, thank you.
Thank you, Ms Ryan, for coming again to the Royal Commission, giving us the benefit of your experience and ideas. As Commissioner Ryan and Commissioner Galbally have indicated, your evidence has been extremely interesting, provocative a little and very helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Chair.
I think we're to have a shorter adjournment.
Yes, five minutes, if it please, Chair.
All right, well, it's now 20 past 10, we'll resume in five minutes' time.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Ms Eastman.
Thank you, Commissioners. Our next witness is the Fair Work Ombudsman, Ms Sandra Parker.
Good morning, Ms Parker, and thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence today. Thank you also for your statement. Just to explain where everybody is, Commissioner Galbally is joining the hearing from Melbourne. I am in the Sydney Hearing Room of the Royal Commission together with Commissioner Ryan on my right. Ms Eastman is also in the Sydney Hearing Room. And I'll now ask Ms Eastman to ask you some questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. You are Sandra Parker?
Yes.
And you're the Fair Work Ombudsman?
Yes, I am.
You've prepared a statement for the Royal Commission dated the 2nd of September this year. Do you have a copy with you?
I do.
Are there any corrections to the statement?
Just two, thank you, Ms Eastman, very minor. In paragraph 52, I just wish to advise you that the new website, the new Fair Work Ombudsman website is now live and launched as of 23 October. And our information on employers with disability was published on the 11th of November. And we already had that information on our websites, but it consolidates it all.
So just pausing there, it's not so much a correction to the paragraph, but just some additional updated information. Could I characterise the material that way?
No, I might.
And there's a second one?
One more, very minor, paragraph 61. Just correcting, that paragraph says we have 4% of employees identified as persons with disability. That percentage should be 7%.
Seven? So does that come from records within the human resources system? Or does that come from an employee census survey? You may be aware that the Royal Commission has heard over the course of this week that there's data recorded in HR systems. And there's also... this data recorded in HR systems, and there's also information available to agencies through the employee census, and we see discrepancies in the numbers. So is the seven percent in the HR system or from some other source?
So that's from the APS Census results that were just released.
Right, okay, so that's a sense, seven percent is a census one? And was the four percent based on what was recorded in the Fair Work Ombudsman human resource records?
That was also from the census.
From the census, okay.
And that's all.
So with additions and clarification, are the contents of this statement true and correct?
Yes, they are.
I want to start by just asking you some questions about your role, and we'll start in terms of your background and your appointment as the Fair Work Ombudsman, and then I want to turn to some of the statutory responsibilities. So you assumed the appointment of Fair Work Ombudsman in July twenty eighteen, and you have a five-year term?
Yes.
And prior to that, you've held a number of very senior roles in the Commonwealth Public Service, is that right?
That's correct.
One of the roles you held was to be the Head of the Office of the Australian Safety and Compensation Council. Now, is that the agency which is now known as Safe Work Australia?
Yes, it is.
And we heard from Ms Baxter, the present CEO of Safe Work Australia, about the role of the agency. When you were the Head of the Office of the Australian Safety and Compensation Council, did that involve developing national policy on work health and safety and workers' compensation?
Yes, it did.
So you've come to the role of the Fair Work Ombudsman with a very detailed knowledge, can I ask, around work health and safety and workers' compensation, is that right?
Yes, I have some experience in, in that area.
But it's not your function as the Fair Work Ombudsman to regulate our work health and safety issues specifically, is that right?
That's correct.
So you don't have a prosecutorial role in relation to whether there's any breaches of work health and safety laws, that's right, isn't it?
No, no, I don't have, I don't have that role.
But there are some aspects of the way in which the Fair Work Act operates, and we'll probably come to these a little later, that does touch upon issues around work health and safety in part, is that right?
Yes, and we do work closely with those agencies.
And looking at your role as the Fair Work Ombudsman, is it is impossible, is it not, to silo off work health and safety from the day-to-day regulation and activities between employers and employees in Australian workplaces?
Insofar as they affect workers, we have a fairly specific role, of course, under the Fair Work Act. So as you say, we can't traverse into work health, safety areas. But just an example briefly, during the whole pandemic, we worked very closely with the work health, safety agencies around advice to employees, and there is, there was definitely an overlap, you know, between, you know, what employers can actually do, standing down workers, returning them to work, all of those different aspects, and of course, their requirements to create a healthy, safe workplace for their employees.
So now turning to the Office of the Fair Work Ombudsman, and your role is, it's a role established under the Fair Work Act, and the Fair Work Act sets out the particular functions that you have to discharge, and you've set those out at paragraph sixteen of the statement. But in summary, your functions are very broad, aren't they? To promote harmonious, productive and cooperative workplace relations, to promote and monitor compliance with the Fair Work Act and Fair Work Instruments, just pausing there. For people who might not be familiar with what Fair Work Instruments means, that means modern awards and enterprise agreements. If people are unfamiliar with modern awards and enterprise agreements, a modern award is a document that sets out terms and conditions relevant to a particular workplace, and that's really approved by the Fair Work Commission, is that right?
That's right.
And, and the modern award really sets out what is the baseline level, and it will set out, for example, rates of pay, it might set out some particular conditions about the way in which work is done. I'm trying to sort of deal with modern awards in a very cursory way, but anything else you'd like to add in terms of describing what a modern award is?
They are, as you say, the baseline, so they provide a whole range of levels, so that you have the base level worker coming in, it might be, let's say it's the Restaurant Caterers Award, they provide the base level, what wage you should be getting, what penalty rates you should be getting, what hours of work, if you get meal breaks, if you get overtime rates, it includes information on apprentices, and then it has all the other levels as well. So once you get promoted to the next level or the next level, so they're quite comprehensive documents, they can be quite complex, and my agency provides advice on that and tries to make them as simple as possible for people to understand.
And that's one of the big functions, isn't it, of your office, is to provide information to employees and employers about what their respective rights and responsibilities are under modern awards?
Yes, we, we see that as a fundamental role, and it's probably, it's a very large percentage of our role, is to educate people and assist them through, through those means, yes.
When we're talking modern awards, the way in which the modern awards work under the Fair Work Act is that they apply to particular types of work, and they might be areas of work. So you just mentioned, say, restaurants, but there's a fast food award, there's a hairdresser's award, there's a teacher's award. So depending on what the particular sort of occupational industry might be, there'll be an award that might be referable to that particular area. So if I, say if I was a seventeen-year-old and I was starting my first job and I'm going to work in a cafe in my local suburb, then there'll be a modern award that would cover me, is that right?
That's right, and we have a tool that allows you to go in and have a look at that and work out approximate hourly rate you should be getting, the sort of breaks you should be able to have, what sort of conditions you should be working under, and so on.
And so even if I didn't know the name of the award, I could describe the type of work that I'm doing or who I might be working for, and if I put that information into the parts of Fair Work Ombudsman's website, up will come everything that I need to know about my working conditions and the safety provided to me as a worker under the modern award, is that right?
That's correct, and if you are still unsure, you can contact us via our call centres, and our staff will explain everything to you.
And the modern awards are quite important for people to know what their minimum rate of pay should be, and whether, for example, they are entitled to overtime or penalty rates. And so it's an important tool, isn't it, for workers to understand what at least their pay entitlements might be, is that right?
Absolutely critical, and we try very hard to educate people on these, just so they understand their, their entitlements.
And if there's a breach of a modern award, then the Fair Work Act says that if you think there's been a breach of the award, then action can be taken to enforce a worker's rights if there's been a breach of the award, is that right?
That's right.
And one of the functions of the ombudsman is that if there has been a breach or a failure to comply with a modern award, then the ombudsman has got standing or can take action for the employee of a breach of the award, but you would make that decision based on the overall compliance programme that you have. So just so that no one is under the apprehension, that they can ring you this afternoon for every entire breach of every award, and the ombudsman would act, that you'd make decisions strategically and in accordance with a compliance programme as to what breaches you might act on, is that right?
Just to make a slight, we do actually help everyone who contacts us, and what I would say is if, if there has been, so we don't really prioritise calls that come in. And what we do prioritise is what I'd call our proactive work, which is going out and do random audits or audits of different areas that we know are risky. But if someone contacts us and they are after something other than information, and they say, I believe I have been underpaid, then there'll be a discussion with the, with our customer support officer, and if it looks like there has been a breach or it sounds like that, then we will actually look into it, inquire into it, and if this, if there is an underpayment, then we will use an enforcement tool.
Right, but, but you only have a hundred and seventy-nine inspectors, and so I think you've said in your statement that sometimes there are going to be limits on what can be done in terms of the resources that are available to the agency, is that right?
Yeah, so what we try to do in the first instance is to assist people to sort the matter out themselves, and by that, we point them to our website, we give them tools to help them sort it out themselves. Most workers actually do want to sort it out themselves, once they get the information they need, and they're armed with that. Most of them are uncomfortable raising it with the employer, so it is often the case that when they come to us for a complaint, if you like, it's because they've tried to do all that, it hasn't occurred, it hasn't happened, employer's still underpaying or not listening, that's when we would get involved, but we would certainly not send them away, we would help them as far as we can.
And would it be fair to say that what you seek to do in terms of providing the information through the website or through the telephone service that you have, is that workers can get information that helps them resolve those issues themselves without feeling that every time they have to go to a lawyer or to incur some costs in enforcing their rights or knowing what their rights might be, is that right?
Yes, that's right, we, like, as with most litigations, as with most regulators, you know, litigation's a last resort, and we would always say that for any customer coming to us, any client as well, that litigation really should be a last resort.
Right. Now, coming back to Fair Work Instruments, the other one that you've identified is enterprise agreements, and they're a little bit different from modern awards, because the enterprise agreements are agreements entered into between the employer and the employees, and it might be at a particular workplace, or it might be that the employer's activities cover a number of workplaces, but the employer and employees work together to agree on what might be particular terms and conditions relevant to the, the employer's particular business. Is that right again, I'm putting that at a very high level?
No, that's absolutely correct, and it's underpinned by the modern award, so it can't undercut the modern award.
Yes, so it just might just be features of the particular workplace. So for example, many of the public sector agencies may have an enterprise agreement with their public sector workers.
Yes.
Now, part of the other functions that you have include to inquire into and to investigate any act or practice that may be contrary to the Fair Work Act or the instruments, and that might involve the inspectors, as you say, doing random visits, or it might require the employers to produce documents that the inspectors can review to look at whether or not there has been any act or practice contrary to the Fair Work Act, is that right?
Yes.
And some of the, when you're talking about acts or practices contrary to the Fair Work Act, there's quite a wide range of acts and practices that the Fair Work Act cover, but it could be things like matters in the Fair Work Regulations, that employers have to keep records in relation to their employees, they have to provide pay slips to their employees, they have to keep relevant records about the rates of pay, so there's all sorts of different obligations that might be described as administrative nature, as well as matters around how employees might be treated in the workplace.
Yes.
So then one of the functions is to commence proceedings in the court or the Fair Work Commission to enforce the Fair Work Act, and we've touched on this a little already, and you can't commence court proceedings for everything, and so you have a compliance and enforcement policy that identifies the priority areas for the Fair Work Ombudsman in terms of what matters might be the subject of proceedings in the Fair Work Commission or in the federal court, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Then the final matter that you identify is this function of representing employees who are or may become party to proceedings under the Fair Work Act or under a Fair Work Instrument, if that will promote compliance with the Fair Work Act or the Fair Work Instrument. Now, I want to ask you about this, because one of the issues which has arisen during the course of this hearing is that for workers with disability, the thought of even commencing legal proceedings and the risk of costs, and we'll come to costs in a moment under the Fair Work Act, but the cost of those proceedings, the time it might take and the uncertainty of the outcome can be a deterrent to workers seeking to exercise their rights. And some of the suggestions that have been made to the Royal Commission is that there should be somebody who can take those proceedings on behalf of workers. So this is a function that you can exercise under the Fair Work Act, and could I ask you to tell the Royal Commission a little bit about what happens if the ombudsman decides to step in and represent employees or to conduct the case on behalf of employees? What does that mean?
Certainly, thank you. So we have two functions around, that allow us to bring prosecutions. The first is under section six eight two one D in the, in the Fair Work Act, and that allows the Fair Work Ombudsman to bring proceedings in its own name to enforce the Fair Work Act, and that's the typical one that we use. The second one that you have mentioned is under section six eight two one F, and that is that FOE may represent employees or outworkers in a proceeding if the Fair Work Ombudsman considers that representing them will promote compliance with the Fair Work Act. And I, so as you said earlier, Ms Eastman, proceedings are commenced in accordance with our compliance enforcement policy and our legal services directions. And there's a number of considerations we use, I would say, I'll just briefly say that we typically commence proceedings under the first part, as in we bring proceedings in our own name, and that is because we can obtain benefits for employees, like back payments. Employees in those matters are not parties to the proceedings, so they don't have to run the matter, and they don't have to bear the risk of any legal obligations. And it also ensures that instructions don't conflict with positions taken in other FOE matters or in other statutory obligations we have, for example, the Legal Services Directions or the PGPA Act. The second one that you mentioned, where we can represent employees or outworkers, it's not used routinely, and I'll explain why, it's, it can only be used when we consider that representing employees or outworkers will promote compliance with the Fair Work Act. And we've taken, it's probably important to say, we've taken a view over, since we were established, that this requires representative, representation of more than one employee with similar claims arising from the same or similar circumstances, so not an individual.
So you're looking at those matters that have got a systemic aspect to it, is that right?
That's, that's right, and it, and I would also say that can have a negative outcome of cost orders going to an employee, and that's the risk when an employee brings their own action. We have used it twice, one matters currently before the court, and in both cases it involves multiple employees, and they were both cases where the FOE had already investigated the employer's conduct, and they were matters where at least one employee already had proceedings before a court. So just if I could briefly just give you one example of, of where we can represent... So just if I could briefly just give you one example of of where we can represent. Groups of workers when we bring our own proceedings.
Just pa- pausing there, when you bring proceedings, it doesn't, it might be for one person. But it might be that there's a large number of employees or even a relatively small number of employees with the same employer. With the same problem, and that might be, say, in an underpayments or not complying with regulations about. Pay slips and the like.
Yes, as you said.
You can make that decision that when you're representing employees, it's not just one, it could be a number of employees with a common problem, is that right?
Indeed, that's that's correct.
Example?
Yes, so the example I'll just briefly give you is with with the first one where we bring proceedings in our own name, in the FOE's name. We have a matter in front of the court at the moment, which is Woolworths. And in that matter, we are alleging, we're using, we're alleging underpayment. Of one point two million dollars for seventy employees. But we are seeking the court's agreement, we're seeking application across the entire. Workforce of that particular worker that we're looking at, which is salary managers. And so we're actually taking, if you like, a sample of seventy. But we're asking for the penalties to be applied, assuming we get penalties, for nineteen thousand workers.
Right, so just what, just to explain, if we can, penalties and recovery of wages. So in terms of what might be the outcome of any proceeding that the ombudsman commences. One of the outcomes can be recovery of wages if there, for example, has been an underpayment. But one feature of the Fair Work Act is there are some provisions of the Fair Work Act. That can result in what is called a civil penalty being imposed on an employer. So it's not a criminal law, but it is a penalty for the failure to comply. And those penalties can be made for the employer, if it's a corporate employer. But in some cases, it can also extend to directors and senior officers of companies, because they might be. Accessories, so they've allowed the the noncompliance to occur. So the civil penalty, though, has to be in order of the court, is that right? It's not something you can decide.
No, we can seek penalties, but the court makes the the decision, that's correct.
And you've said in in your statement that last year, that the ombudsman recovered over a hundred and forty eight million dollars for workers. And you also obtained court-ordered civil penalties. In the order of two point nine million for contraventions of the Fair Work Act. And that's through the process of litigation, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Now, this, if a penalty is ordered. Generally, the penalty is a matter that goes into the Commonwealth Consolidated Revenue. But the penalty can also be allocated to the the worker as well, in some cases, is that right?
Yes, and it can also include other more unusual requirements. We have sought and obtained in the past agreement for employers to do certain things. You know, address their payroll systems or take other actions.
So corrective actions to avoid the systemic issues repeating.
Yes.
Litigation, as you said, is a last resort, the ombudsman can also negotiate with the employers. And you've got a tool that allows you to achieve what's sometimes called an enforceable undertaking. So how how does that work in practice with employers?
So, an enforceable undertaking is is quite a desirable outcome. From our perspective, what it allows, it it avoids the long, long process of litigation. And the costs and time involved in those, they can be, you know, at least usually at least twelve months, often longer. And a lot longer once they get into the court. But they also allow us to, the Fair Work Ombudsman, to negotiate. Some unusual terms, and often typically, we use enforceable undertakings quite frequently. We've been particularly using them in matters for corporate sector underpayments, where they self-disclose. Cooperate with us, agree to do a whole lot of things to fix the problem. Our view is that it is, we would probably not get necessarily a large penalty in a court. And we can get a good outcome for an enforceable undertaking, and we do get to, advantage of an enforceable undertaking. Is also that we get to scrutinize the company for a few years. So we require them to do annual audits of their payroll, provide the results of those audits. To the Fair Work Ombudsman, and we review and check those. And we also typically require them to address their payroll system issues. And prove that to us, if you like, to train their human resources staff. To apologize to the workers that they have underpaid. Often with corporates, for example, we require them to put notices in media, in newspapers or social media. To say they have done the wrong thing and that they have rectified it and how. And there's an enforcement component to that, sorry, a deterrence component in that. And we also regularly include a contrition payment. Now, contrition payment is a payment offered by the company to the regulator. That recognizes that they have done the wrong thing and they are sorry. But it is also a recognition that significant taxpayer dollars have gone into. The regulator providing assurance to the community, that the payments have been properly assessed. Rectified and that they won't happen again. And we have used those regularly, the money goes into consolidated revenue. To be reused by the taxpayer.
This is a regime where there is significant power for your agency. And there's also significant penalties for employers who fail to meet the standards. And if you take that regime together with the work that you're doing around education. And also this ability to monitor through enforceable undertakings. Do you have a view as to whether this is effective in changing workplace cultures?
I I hope so. I certainly believe we are making a difference. We have had, I think it's fair to say, we've had significant. Results, we've we've, we've, we are recovering five times the amount of recoveries for workers that we got. Five years ago, or three, four years ago. We are getting a lot more media attention and I, it's not that regulators necessarily seek that, but it helps. And that we are, I believe that we are better known in the community. Certainly, the fact that we take, we have really increased our enforcement effort and we've done. Certainly, I have done that deliberately since taking up this position, I've shifted us from. Less than ten percent of our matters being done, managed through enforcement. To around twenty five percent now, I believe twenty three to twenty five percent. And that we have large companies in court, at the moment, we have around a hundred and thirty matters in court. That's the highest we've we've had in the history of the agency. And so I think we are making a difference, there's a lot more we could do and we'll do our best to do that, we'll just keep trying to improve.
And for for the, this financial year, you've got particular priorities. Which are to continue to support workplaces as they recover from the impacts of COVID nineteen. And the main focus being on fast food, cafes and the restaurant sector, the horticulture sector. Contract cleaning sector, sham contracting, the large corporate underpayments and franchise arrangements. And this fits in with the commitment to prioritize small business employers and employees. And what are described as vulnerable workers. And in that class of vulnerable workers, you specifically identify migrant workers, young workers and the low paid, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Now, looking at that description, would you accept that it is likely. That there will be employees who identify as people with disability. Who are working in fast food, cafes, restaurants, horticulture, cleaning. Perhaps even for large corporates. And they may be the types of workers who can be described as vulnerable workers, is that right?
Yes.
And is the Royal Commission correct to understand that with respect to the whole of the Fair Work Act? And how the Fair Work Act applies, is all of those rights and protections in the Fair Work Act apply to workers with disability? That right?
Yes.
And so the protections, for example, in relation to national employment standards, apply to people with disability. With some exceptions in terms of supported wages, the minimum wage protections also apply to people with disabilities.
Yes.
The right to ensure that the, your employer keeps records, provides you with pay slips and pays you the right amount of money. That applies to workers with disabilities.
Yes, all workers with disabilities.
The protections in the Fair Work Act against unfair dismissal, that applies to workers with disabilities. The Fair Work Commission, so this is outside your particular function. But there are functions in the Fair Work Act that give the Fair Work Commission a power to make stop bullying orders. So that that applies to workers with disabilities, is that right?
Yes.
So i- in terms of the approach that we take in protection of workers' rights. And the obligations on employees in the Fair Work Act, the starting point is that they have general application to workers with disabilities, is that right?
Yes, they do.
But there are also some quite specific provisions that touch upon rights of people with disability as workers. That are specific to workers with disabilities, there's not many, but there's some, is that right?
That's right.
And I want to ask you about an area in the Fair Work Act, which was called general protections. And I've come to that in a moment, but before I do that. Is the Royal Commission right to understand that you do not, or your office does not have any specific function? In relation to the operation of the Disability Discrimination Act?
No, we do not.
So you don't take and handle complaints alleging disability discrimination? That's for the Australian Human Rights Commission, is that right?
Yes, that's correct, we have a role, as you say, but they are, it's quite a specific one.
And you don't, for example, have any power to commence prosecutions for breaches of the Disability Discrimination Act?
No, we don't.
And to the extent that there might be an inquiry that comes specifically to you, that raises the types of issues. That might be better addressed by the Disability Discrimination Act. It's likely that there might be a referral to the Australian Human Rights Commission for assistance in relation to disability discrimination, is that right?
That's right, or to the Fair Work Commission if it's about unfair, or if it relates to potentially unfair dismissal. Or we might, we may, and sometimes do refer to state and territory, human rights bodies as well, depending on the on the matter.
So there are some specific provisions dealing with workers with disability in terms of supported wage schemes. And that's not a topic that I want to address today. But I want to look at the matters that you've identified in paragraph thirty five of your statement. And in particular, you've made a reference to one provision in the Fair Work Act. It's section three hundred and fifty one, and I don't want this to be sort of a. Like I'm turning into a law lecturer about how section three five one operates. But this is a provision that has the heading discrimination in it. But it's a provision that says this, an employer must not take adverse action. Against a person who is an employee or prospective employee of the employer. Because of the persons, and then there's a range of characteristics. And relevantly, a characteristic of physical or mental disability appears there. And this is described as a civil penalty provision, so this is, if you breach this provision. It could give rise to not only remedies for the employee concerned. But it also might result in the employer facing a civil penalty being imposed, is that right?
Yes.
So I just want to unpack what this actually means. So the first thing is that the Fair Work Act in addressing disability. Tends to look at disability as physical or mental disability. And so that seems to be sort of a definition that appears in a number of places in the Fair Work Act. Now, I don't expect that you've looked at all of the drafting history and the drafting history with respect to these particular. Provisions, but would you agree with me, it's a little bit of an anomaly in that the Fair Work Act. Refers only to physical or mental disability. Whereas the Disability Discrimination Act and the way in which disability is described in other legislation. Is not confined to particular types of disability, that's something you're aware of?
Yes, an inconsistency, it's not the only inconsistency.
That's true, so so in terms of of this being a protection for workers with disability. You have to squeeze yourself, don't you, to into being a person with physical or mental disability. So that might exclude people with disabilities such as intellectual or cognitive disabilities.
Yes, we, the lack of definition is, it does make it more difficult.
So assuming that a person with the disability that meets the description here is covered. This says an employer must not take adverse action, and so I want to just deal with what does adverse action mean? Are we right in understanding that the way in which the Fair Work Act operates, is that adverse action is this? That if a person has a workplace right or has exercised a workplace right. Then because of that, the employer can't take adverse action. And adverse action might be dismissing the person, not giving the person their legal entitlements. Changing their job to their disadvantage, treating them differently to other people in the workplace. Refusing to employ them or offering them different or unfair terms and conditions. So can I broadly pick up those concepts of adverse action?
Yes, that's good, thank you.
So coming back to section three five one, in effect. An employer must not dismiss a person, deny a person their legal entitlements. Change their job to their disadvantage, treat them differently, refuse to employ them. Or offer them different terms and conditions because the employee or prospective employee. Has a physical or mental disability.
That's right, and the other fourteen attributes, but yes, that's correct.
And the other attributes.
Yes.
So on its basis, it looks like quite a helpful provision for somebody with disability. That if they say, well, I've experienced adverse action, I might be able to do something about this. Is this something that a person with disability could come to your office and ask you about?
Yes, they could.
And they don't have to go to your office, they might say, we want to take legal action about this. And that's open to the employee themselves to commence some sort of complaint or legal action, is that right?
That's right, or they might decide to go to the Human Rights Commission or Fair Work Commission for dismissal matters. Or a state or territory, as we've said, yes.
So we've heard earlier this week from some of the lawyers who work at the front line, so to speak. In community legal centers or legal aid commission, that sometimes it's really difficult to work out where do you go. And which act should you follow and what might. and which act should you follow and what might be the consequences of this. So just looking at the Fair Work Act, this seems to be one provision that looks like it would protect workers with disability, but only some disability. There is a little bit of a catch to this provision, isn't there, that starts to make it very complex? And that is, the catch is that the adverse action does not cover taking action because someone can't perform the inherent requirements of the particular position. That's one. The other is a particular exemption in relation to a staff member of a faith-based institution, so that's there. But the other one, which is particularly complex, is if there is a state or federal anti-discrimination law and that law does not make this type of conduct that would be adverse action unlawful, then in effect, this provision in three five one has very limited work to do, is that right? This is a very complex provision, so I don't want to oversimplify it, but just to get a sense for the commissioners about how helpful this section might be in practice.
That's right, so it doesn't apply to action that is deemed unlawful under any anti-discrimination law that's in force where the action was taken, so that's correct, that's the double negative, but that's
Yes, it is.
Correct.
It does not apply to action that is not unlawful.
Correct.
So that in effect means that if the conduct might be permissible under a state or federal anti-discrimination law, that in effect knocks out this provision.
That's right.
But it's also been interpreted that if the relevant area is not covered by one of those state or territory laws, that also knocks it out. So would it be fair to say that this is a provision that on its face looks quite attractive, but in practice can be really tricky to navigate?
Yes, and the definitional part makes it difficult as well, as we've said.
But if, but if, for example, I overcome all of those hurdles, I think I've probably got a case that could be brought under this provision in the Fair Work Act. There's some important features, isn't there? The first feature is that as the employee, I don't bear the onus of proof. All I have to do is to point to an allegation about being treated differently or not being given my legal entitlements. And I have to demonstrate that I'm a person with a physical or mental disability. But from that point onwards, the Fair Work Act reverses the onus of proof, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
And the employer then, it's sort of deemed to have done the adverse action, but the employer then has to disprove that the employer didn't act for the prohibited reason, is that right?
That's right, although matters of evidence still have to be taken into account, of course. It's not an absolute, but it's definitely an advantage from the employee's perspective.
And that reverse onus, if I can loosely describe the operation of section three sixty and three six one in that way, that reverse onus applies to many of these civil penalty provisions, but particularly in the general protections area, the employer's got that reverse onus, is that right?
That's right.
Now, from a practical perspective, what does this actually mean uh, when it comes to taking court action? Because the reverse onus applies in the court actions that the ombudsman commences as well. But what do you see as the sort of practical effect of the reverse onus?
Um, I, I suppose it, it certainly, um, makes our job easier as a regulator. Um, and, but as I said before, it's not an absolute and, um, you know, people can still provide evidence that a court needs to consider. Um, but yes, the practical impact is, it assists.
The other feature is that, um, the Fair Work Act has a particular great aim around legal costs and the exposure to costs. So we've heard earlier this week that one of the barriers for people seeking to exercise their legal rights is the cost of bringing legal proceedings. So under the Fair Work Act, the starting point is that both sides bear their own legal costs. But a court can make an order for costs if there's particular circumstances. But it's fair to say in practice it's pretty unusual for the court to make a finding of costs against an unsuccessful employee unless something really has gone wrong in the way in which the case is run. Is that a fair way of dealing with section five seventy? So i- in terms of your experience, um, there have not been a lot of prosecutions that the ombudsman has brought in relation to section three five one, is that right?
That's right.
And is the reason for that is that when issues of discrimination arise, sometimes it can be very difficult in terms of identifying all of the evidence about why people engaged in the adverse action? Is that one of the reasons, an evidentiary reason?
Uh, yes, it is when it gets to that, to that, um, I, yeah, with, with your indulgence, I, I, we also, uh, we get very few complaints and there's, I've been looking into these reasons why, about allegations of, of discrimination. Um, and I would also say that we, the majority of matters that do come before us are referred to the Human Rights Commission or Fair Work Commission or State Territory Human Rights Agencies. And I, um, stop me if I'm going down the path.
Yeah, now I think it would be helpful because I think from where you sit and your particular statutory functions is it would assist the commissioners to understand your perspective on this, having heard the perspective from the lawyers who are trying to work out what, what paths do we take, do we go down this route, do we go down that route? What might be the costs, what are the timeframes? Because it all sounded very complex when the lawyers at the frontline were telling us about the options. So from a regulator perspective, I think it's helpful to understand what you're seeing and what you think the reasons might be.
Yeah, no, thank you. So you, in, in my statement, it's paragraph thirty five, we say that in twenty twenty one, only one of, um, eighteen thousand six hundred ninety-six disputes involved disability discrimination. And of course, I, um, have looked into that in some depth since seeing that number. Um, and it is, it is an interesting, yeah, there's some really interesting analysis, I think, that hopefully will be of assistance. Um, so the majority of, of matters we get through our, so they come to us through our information lines, our call centres, um, through what we call my account, people can set up an account and get information and be alerted, uh, to their previous inquiries, et cetera. And we also have anonymous reports that come in, uh, each year. And we get quite a lot of complaints, for example, through the call centre three seventy-six thousand last year. Um, so where they come into the Fair Work Ombudsman, they're assessed by our staff, our frontline staff, and if they involve a, a discrimination issue, they can be flagged in our system, and as I mentioned, there are fifteen attributes that we look for that are in, in the act that are required to be, um, in relation to adverse action. But the majority of the calls that come into our staff or are received through our online services are referred to the Human Rights Commission or the Fair Work Commission. Um, and so in explaining that, um, it is our experience that the, those agencies are highly skilled in resolving disputes and they take a dispute resolution approach to matters. Um, and based on our experience with all workers, including those with disability, that is much more conducive to preserving the goodwill which underpins most employment relationships or that we hope to foster. And our agency experiences, that is the overwhelming preferred approach of most employees who contact us for advice and assistance. I'd also say, and you've already said this, general protections litigation is much more uncertain, it's adversarial. It obviously has its place, uh, but it's generally reserved for when other mechanisms have failed or when we see systemic or egregious breaches. Um, and what staff in the Fair Work Ombudsman are looking for is those matters, egregious systemic, and if they see that as a flag, uh, they mark it in our system, if you like, in putting it simple terms. And then it will be provided to our compliance enforcement teams for, um, review and decision about whether it needs to be formally investigated and progress to compliance enforcement. And I've mentioned before, of course, the length of time it takes to be, get a matter into court and also, um, that we have to be model litigant, et cetera. Um, and I, I've spoken to a lot of people while this, um, commission has been running. And I continue to believe that referral to those agencies is the most effective and desirable approach in the majority of matters.
Just on, on that, the, the other agencies have got no capacity to commence proceedings and represent employees in the way you have.
No.
Those other regimes don't have civil penalties attached to them. The other regimes are cost jurisdictions and the other regimes with variations here and there essentially put the onus of proof on the employee with disability. So looking at the, the sort of structure of the scheme in the Fair Work Act and the structure of the scheme in some of the other provisions, is there a risk that the type of success that you've achieved on recovery of wages, on civil penalties, but also bringing that public attention to what are rights and what are responsibilities? Mean that there is a risk that workers with disability, if they're gently moved into the other areas, that we miss out those opportunities of having some high-profile penalties? Costs managed, we miss out on those aspects, don't we?
Yes, we do. And I, in thinking this through and discussing it with people, I think what is missing in the approach that we have at the moment is what I might call a return referral mechanism. So sometimes we need to get it to the Fair Work Commission if it's dismissal, because as you know, there's a twenty-one day timeframe. Um, and what I mean by a return referral mechanism is I would like to explore that where alternative dispute resolution has not worked, where it has failed, or where the Human Rights Commission or the Fair Work Commission or the other bodies have determined that it's not appropriate for, and they've seen other flags or other information has come out through alternative dispute resolution, which is highly likely. I would like to see a, us explore a return whereby it comes back to us and we would commit to reviewing every one of those with a lens of, does it meet these potentially adverse action test discrimination? And is it appropriate, obviously with the permission of the person, it has to be very much their call, um, that it go forward for possible compliance enforcement? Because I agree with you, deterrence is important, sending message is important, and I think we could get some much stronger cases, um, this way.
That, that might mean some statutory amendments and, off the top of my head, in the areas of section seven two six and following of the Fair Work Act, which are those provisions that you can't have both a discrimination claim and a fair work claim at the same time. So would, would it need some statutory amendments to clear, to be absolutely clear about the preservation of rights between the two systems?
I, well, that's a very good question. I, I would, we would certainly need to look at that. Um, I, my, our first assessment was that it could happen without legislative change, but, and that would be ideal, obviously. Um, but, and we couldn't do it automatically. I mean, obviously there'll be privacy and other issues, so we wouldn't need to have the agreement of the person and, and so on. Um, and we wouldn't want to set up expectations that every person back, yes, so we'd still want to do our own assessment. Uh, but that's, it's a very good question and I will, would certainly want to explore it. If this is something that we think would be, uh, more effective, then yes, we would want to explore all of those things.
If, if it assists you, and I don't know whether your attention has been drawn to a submission made by the Commonwealth or by this, sorry, the Australian Government in response to the council assisting submissions from Public Hearing Nine. And I think you've referred in your statement to having read the systemic barriers identified in Public Hearing Nine. But the Commonwealth submissions of the nineteenth of March specifically referred to the general protections provision in the Fair Work Act to protect employees with disability from adverse action. And then also a reference at paragraph one four one, there being a number of avenues available to an employee who believes they've been subject to general protections contraventions. And it makes specific reference to your office investigating alleged contraventions and the, and the like. Were you consulted by the Australian Government in response, when they were preparing for at the time that they made this submission to the Royal Commission in March?
I, I believe so, yes, I think we were.
So you're aware that in terms of dress, addressing one of the systemic barriers, which was systemic barrier twenty-six, that the Australian Government had identified a role for the Fair Work Ombudsman, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
And so the matters that you, that we've just been discussing arise, really, is it right from thinking about the matters that we've identified from our Public Hearing Nine work and matters that you've turned your mind to in prepara- in preparation for giving evidence today, is that right?
Yes.
Now, there's a lot more in your statement that I'd like to address and it may be that we may need to talk to you again on the, uh, work that you've done in relation to enforceable undertakings concerning an Australian disability enterprise.
Yes.
And some of the work that you've done in terms of, uh, workers with disability and under payments, the commission will hold a hearing next year looking at the DES system and AED. So I might need to come back to you, albeit very briefly, on those topics at a future point in time. But it may be that the commissioners now have got some questions for you.
Yes, Commissioner Ryan, do you have any?
I did have a question, but I think the advice the council assisting suggests, I should not ask the question, so I won't.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Gialboyle?
Um, thank you very much. Look, I've got a question, but I'm not sure whether it's for you, but I, I'm, a, an enterprise agreement, do you know of any that include reasonable adjustments as part of the agreement?
I, I'd need to, I'm very happy to check that for you. Commissioner, I don't know.
That'd be great if you could do that, thank you.
Yes, we might ask you, as with other matters, to, uh, provide the answer to that question in writing and that will no doubt be organised by the respective legal representatives, thank you. Uh, this has been a very interesting seminar, uh, conducted by Professor Eastman, and as I'm not intimately familiar with the Fair Work Act, but it looks to me, piecing together the various provisions, that the jurisdiction, your jurisdiction to, to take action extends, is almost, not quite, coextensive with the provisions of the disability discrimination. with the provisions of the Disability Discrimination Act, in the sense that adverse action um on the ground of physical or mental uh disability seems to cover most, if may not deal with reasonable adjustments. I see, I, I'm not familiar with the jurisprudence, I'm not sure how physical or mental disability has been interpreted, but it could be interpreted in a way that is more or less coextensive with the Disability Discrimination Act. It therefore may be, and this is something, of course, that follows from Ms Eastman's question, that there is power already for direct enforcement of most uh conduct that would constitute discrimination under the Disability Discrimination Act, and indeed, under state law. Um because of the definition of employer that covers constitutional, that's dealt with in a way that covers the constitutional issue. So I suppose that's more of a comment, but why have you formed the view that if you were to get complaints about discrimination on the ground of disability, that they're best referred in the first instance to other agencies and that even if you were to change course, you'd see it by way of a referral back from an agency?
Is it?
Is it a question of resources?
And I, no, it's not, not really. It's, it's the, the issue. Often people come to us with multiple issues. Um and so it is often, you know, difficult to, it's see that it's a, so we may know that obviously that if the person discloses that they have a disability, um they may have multiple issues. So they, they often don't come and say, I've been discriminated against. They say, I've got, been underpaid. Um you know, I've had, might have had hours reduced, there's a list of things. In some cases, um if it's about a termination, for example, there's pretty strict, there's strict time requirements, twenty one days for them to make an application for unfair dismissal, and that is the Fair Work Commission's role to manage, not my agency's. Uh which means we want to get it to the Fair Work Commission quickly, so that they can pursue that. They then may have other complaints and they may come back to us on other complaints that aren't dismissal. Um but what I would say is, our experience with workplace disputes is that nearly always the employee wants to preserve the employment relationship. They want to stay employed. It's very important for a whole range of reasons.
Yeah.
And so part of what we try to do, and we have skilled staff to do this, is to encourage them, as I said in first instance, to try to help themselves with our help. So we give them guidance material, we might give them an email to send to their boss. Uh we might have them copy us into that email if we think the boss is not really listening. So we try to have them resolve it first, uh and then we'll come in and assist. Because people really don't want to make trouble. And even though sometimes they should and they don't, that's usually where they come from. I don't want to make trouble, but I want to know what my rights are and what I might do about it. The, the advantage of skilled, we don't do alternative dispute resolution in my agency. So sending people off when it's a potential discrimination matter, which is complicated, it's never simple. And it's often there's different evidence from the employer and so on. It's, it's, it's complicated and it's sometimes often emotional. A D R works well, it's effective. We know that about three hundred matters are going there to the Human Rights Commission alone each year. Uh what I'm saying is given, if, if it can be resolved in that way and it doesn't initially on its face look egregious or um, you know, systemic as an issue in that workplace, then that can often be a way of resolving the matter, and that makes the employee most often is happy with that and wants it that way. Those bodies, though, with their expertise, uh and we do work with them, um and we think they're, they're doing a wonderful job. They are in a position to get more information out of the person through the way they operate. Just alternative dispute resolution, as you probably know, is highly effective. Um and then if issues are identified, it can come back to us. I, I think it will put us in a better position then to have the trust of the person, the employee, and to take a matter and to get it right. And if needed, go to court or an enforceable undertaking, um and much more likely to be successful.
Understand that, thank you. The definition of adverse action is not limited to action against a current employee. It includes, for example, discrimination by a prospective employer against a prospective employee in the terms or conditions on which the prospective employer offers to employ the prospective employee. So presumably that form of adverse action could include a failure to provide or offer to provide the reasonable adjustments that are required for a person with disability to perform the role for which he or she may be amply uh qualified. So there would be, would there not? And I understand resources issues and expertise, but there would be room for the Fair Work, is it the Fair Work Commission or your office, to bring proceedings on behalf of numbers of people affected by that approach if a particular prospective employee, employer was doing that?
Uh ours usually goes to refusing to employ a prospective employee. We don't have um as, as we've said, we don't have reasonable adjustment in the Fair Work Act framework. It's not part of our remit, unlike the Disability Discrimination Act. Um but, so where we can take that into account, though, is in um something like an enforceable undertaking. Because in an enforceable undertaking, we can put in there whatever we want, really, as, in terms of negotiating the terms of an enforceable undertaking. So in the James Hardy matter, that's in um, in the, um in paragraph fifty five, I believe, in my statement, that, it was that type of matter um where we uh entered into an enforceable undertaking with James Hardy. And that involved reasonable adjustment, but that was via a request for assistance from a worker. And we were able to include reasonable adjustment in there, uh and that was the issue, because it was an enforceable undertaking, so it gave us more flexibility as a regulator.
Hmm. All right, thank you, thank you very much. Uh we won't engage in a discussion about the legal issues, but one of the things we might explore and Professor Eastman may know the answer immediately is uh whether the concept of adverse action includes the failure to provide or offer to provide reasonable adjustments. I suspect it probably does, but that may be wrong. All right, well, thank you very much. That's been a very interesting uh period of time. We've gone over. I'm sorry for the extra time that we've taken. Uh so thank you for your assistance and for the evidence you've given today, including your statement. I think there's some very interesting aspects of your evidence that we would be interested in pursuing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Parker. Uh Commissioners, there's just attenders.
Yes.
So I've given you a note in relation to the tender of Ms Parker's evidence and also some of the amendments Ms Banks identified when she gave evidence.
Well, I have the relevant document. I'll initial the relevant document dated with today's date and the uh documents that are referred to in the document that's headed PH nineteen day five. Uh they will be admitted into evidence with the markings recorded in the document.
Thank you. And we have gone over time, but it may be that people would appreciate a break of fifteen or so minutes.
Yes, it's now nearly twenty to twelve. If we resume at eleven fifty five, thank you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Ms East.
Thank you, um Commissioners. This is the final session for this public hearing, and we have two witnesses. Uh on reflection, I think it probably is easier to take each of their evidence and the issues that they wish to speak about separately. So uh you can see on the screen, Mr Luke Mansfield has joined us. And also Ms Gerry Mitra has joined us. So with um our witnesses' indulgence, Ms Mitra, I thought I might deal with the issues raised in your statement and the particular features of the um NDIS participant employment strategy and cover that part with you. And then, Mr Mansfield, if I could um ask for your indulgence to cover those issues on the NDI A and NDIS, and then I'll come to you on the broader uh Australia-wide strategy. So I won't ask you to comment on each other's areas, and that way I think I might be able to make up a little bit of time, but also not hold you as long as beyond necessary. So Commissioners, are you happy with that approach?
We are, I'm sure.
All right. So, Ms Mitra, can I start with you? You provided a statement to the Royal Commission, and Commissioners, you'll have a copy in tender bundle A behind tab forty seven. And there are some amendments set out in a small curry agenda on uh tab forty nine, capital B. So, Ms Mitra, you are the General Manager, Provider and Markets with the National Disability Insurance Agency, is that right? I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Sorry, that's right, yes.
And you've prepared the statement with the correction for the Royal Commission?
Yes, that's correct.
Do you have a copy of your statement dated the sixteenth of July this year?
I do.
And subject to the amendments provided to us on the tenth of November, are there any other corrections that you wish to make to the statement?
No, there are not.
And are its contents true and correct?
Yes.
So can I start by asking you about your current role as General Manager, Provider and Markets? It's an interesting title. But what does it actually involve? What are your functions and responsibilities at the NDI A?
Uh thank you. So um my role and responsibilities are to oversee the providers uh and the market. So uh with regards to providers, that involves um supporting providers as they engage with the agency. And then with regards to the market, it is that oversight uh and ensuring that the market is working as we would like it to. And so the two kind of go hand in hand together, and the employment branch sits within my division.
So the evidence you're going to talk about today is the participant employment strategy that has been developed by the NDI A. Do you have a direct responsibility for that strategy?
Yes, that, the strategy does sit within my division.
And a participant employment strategy was released on the seventh of November twenty nineteen, is that right?
That's right.
So it's been in operation for a couple of years now?
That's correct.
And you've provided with uh the material accompanying your statement, a copy of the strategy. So Commissioners, you'll see that in the material behind tab forty eight in the bundle. We'll come to that in a moment. Want to ask you about how the strategy came about. So for participants in the NDIS, uh the Royal Commission has heard about the way in which the NDIS operates, what it means to be a participant. So how is it that an employment strategy was developed in the context of the day-to-day operations of the NDIS?
Um thank you, Council. So um you'll see in my statement that um back in late twenty eighteen, the Minister at the time set up a joint task force between DSS and the NDI A to develop a participant, to do some work together. One of the outcomes of that task force was to develop a participant employment strategy specifically focused on the things that the NDI A could do to support the growth of employment outcomes for participants.
Was, was it partly based on the fact that, looking back at June twenty nineteen and um considering NDIS participants, only twenty four percent of NDIS participants of working age were in paid work? Was that part of the reason?
I think um, Council, the key reason was that always as part of the introduction of the NDIS, the intention, obviously, and one of the objects of the act is to encourage and support economic participation by NDIS participants. And at that point, we were getting to the point where a large number of people were coming into the scheme, so it was the right time to pull together um a more focused strategy on how to support people um to participate economically. So I think um the driver for it was, it was partly to do with the timing of the scheme and the maturing of the scheme. And it is only in the last um uh few months that we've got most people into the scheme who were previously um participants of State and Territory Services. And so I think it's just part of that evolution and the maturing and the development of the scheme.
The, the purpose of this strategy is not to ensure that every NDIS participant has to consider and um find paid work. That's not the objective of the strategy, is it?
No, the, under the act, um one of the objectives of the scheme is to improve social, community and economic participation. Um it's certainly not the expectation that every participant who is a participant of the scheme will want even to find employment. And so very clearly the first part of um when people engage with us is about talking to them about the opportunities for economic participation. And so what we're finding is that increasingly, as time goes on and people are in this team for longer and their skills and capacities build, then people are choosing to have a goal around economic participation. And then once that happens, we can put supports in their plan to enable them to achieve that goal.
And i- if the Commissioners uh look at the NDIS Participant Employment Task Force, that's the group that was established to think about a range of strategies leading to the Participant Employment Strategy. But the terms of reference for the task force were to improve employment outcomes for the NDIS participants by connecting them to supports to seek and maintain employment in a setting of their choice through open employment and or supported employment. So just so we're clear, when we're talking about the Participant Employment Strategy and the work undertaken by the NDI A to develop that strategy, it's got to focus on both open and supported employment.
That's correct.
This hearing, we're focusing on open employment. And um a hearing that I think we hope to conduct early next year will have a focus on supported employment, but specifically segregated employment in the, the ADEs. So can we focus today on the open employment aspect of that? And please tell me if any of the matters that I touch on are straying into the other area. Right. So looking at the uh objectives of the task force, I, I note that one of the principles that would guide the task force work was adherence to the United Nations Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disability, by particular reference to Article twenty seven. Now that's one of a range of matters that had to be taken into account in terms of guiding principles. But do you know how the CRPD Article twenty seven influenced the work of the task force? And related to that, how it influenced the development of the strategy?
Uh so, Council, I wasn't um myself personally involved in the development at, at that time with the task force. Uh but my understanding from looking at the records of the agency and in particular the strategy itself is that there was a very clear focus on um on the convention, on the rights of persons with disabilities, and particularly focusing on um the ability to work on an equal basis with others. And that certainly comes through in the strategy document itself, where it talks about that as being one of the principles.
So it's one thing, and Mr Mansfield uh is aware of this, we had this discussion a couple of weeks ago. It's one thing to refer to the convention, but it's another thing to understand the particular scope and content of the rights in the convention. And then a further step of taking those rights and implementing it into an Australian legal setting. So this is why I want to, if you're not familiar with it and you don't know, please say so.
Yep.
But it's helping the Commissioners understand how you move from just referring to the convention to actually using the convention and the rights in developing the strategy. Is that something that you know about?
I, I think it's probably uh best not to comment on it simply because I wasn't there. Certainly, um strong focus on the strategy is about the individual right to choose and to um develop their own goals and their own choice about the kind of and to develop their own goals and their own choice about the kind of economic participation that they want to be involved in. That comes across strongly in the strategy and in the actions that we've taken to implement the strategy. So I think that that certainly appears to very much complement the intention of the convention. But appreciate that that might be probably the best way for me to respond to that question.
And to extent that the C R P D was relevant to this work, do you know whether the agency had any engagement with Mr Mansfield's department as the focal point on the C R P D?
So the the task force was a joint task force between the two agencies. And so therefore, I think there would have been strong engagement at that point in time.
It's not something you've got direct knowledge of because you weren't there?
That's right.
So now I want to turn to the strategy. So the strategy, which is the N D I S Participant Employment Strategy twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two, you've provided to the Royal Commission. And if people following this hearing are interested in seeing, it's on the N D I S website as well. And it might be helpful if we just bring up onto the screen page twelve of the strategy because I think it perhaps gives us a helpful summary of the key features of the strategy. Can you see that, Ms Mitra?
It would be good if you could zoom it in a bit, although I do have the document as well.
All right, well, let's start with the top of the page, which has our vision, our goal and our plan. We've touched on the vision, but I want to look at our goal. So this strategy sets a target of thirty percent of participants of working age to be in paid work by thirty June twenty twenty-three. So that's a target, is that right?
That's correct.
Now, how was this target developed?
So as I understood it at the time, it was a stretch target with a view that we would be able to achieve incremental steps to get into that target. And it was also recognizing our experience that has continued to develop, which is that the longer people are in the scheme and have supports to build their capacity, then the ability for them to engage in economic participation increases. So recognizing that the longer the scheme and the supports from the scheme were available to people and that their their ability to achieve their goals in employment were more likely to occur.
Right, but that sort of is your vision about the expectation of the target. My question is, how was that target developed? So what was the basis for the development of that target? How did you choose thirty percent, not thirty-five or not twenty-eight?
So, Council, that all that I can tell you is that that was a decision made at the time for coming out of the task force and the work that was done and was endorsed at that time, obviously, by the board of the agency.
But you don't know how the thirty percent was arrived at? Because the starting point in June twenty nineteen, as we've mentioned earlier, was twenty-four percent of N D I S participants of working age were in paid employment. So this is to reach thirty percent. You've described that as a stretch target. And we've heard that expression a few times during the course of the week. A stretch target is something which goes beyond what you would actually expect to achieve. Is that right?
Well, no, yes, I guess.
What do you mean by a stretch target? Is it something different from a target? Or does it just sound better with the adjective stress in front of it?
Yeah.
What does it mean?
One that, when we set the target, we and we do believe that it's achievable. I think there are, obviously, the environment's changed slightly in the last little while. But certainly, it's one that we we would like to achieve, we think we can achieve, and we are working hard to achieve.
Well, I'll be a bit more specific. Were there particular employers who were involved in the preparation of the strategy who identified a target that employers felt that they could meet with respect to N D I S participants? Is that the basis of the target?
No, I'm not aware of that being the basis of the target.
What was it that there was consultation with the disability representative organisations? And the advocates for people with disability said the target should be at thirty percent? Was that the reason for the target?
So I think we did a lot of consultation at that time with both participants of the scheme and disability representative organisations and advocates. So certainly, I'm sure their views would have been taken into account. But I can't tell you whether they were specifically advocating for that number.
When you say their views are taken into account, what does that mean? That that they, did they have a decision-making role at all? Or was it that the consultation was to seek their views and that then went into the mix, so to speak, of a range of views?
That's right. And we've tended as part of evidence the consultation report that was done as part of the development of the strategy by the N A S group. And that document outlines the kind of engagement that we went through at the time to develop, as input into developing.
So the Commissioners have a copy of the Phase One Consultation Roundtable Summary Report from the fifteenth of May twenty nineteen. And the appendices set out the roundtable design and Appendix B sets out the roundtable participation. So when you're talking about participants, are you talking about the organisations identified as participating in the roundtables?
Mix of those, that's right. So those, you'll see on Appendix B, you'll see organisations who are represented in attendance, a range of service providers to the N D I A and some disability disability representative organisations as well.
Right, again, if you don't know, please tell me. But looking at the organisations who attended the roundtables, I can't see there any of the employers other than service providers who would employ people in the context of A D Es. So there's no, for example, Accenture, Woolworths, Coles, Medibank, Telstra. I can't see any of the sort of larger corporate employers participating in the roundtables. So is it the case that the organisations who participated were not focused on open employment, but had a focus more on the supported employment?
I'm not able to answer that question because this was part of the input into the development of this strategy we prepared over the following year. So I can't tell you if there were others engaged in different ways.
So if there was consultation with in open employment, so large corporations or the smaller media medium corporations, would there be a document recording the consultation with such entities?
I'm not aware of one.
You're not aware of one? Not something that you looked for when you were preparing for this hearing?
No, there wasn't, I did not find another document in preparation for this. This was the primary consultations.
Let's come back to the page twelve. And if we scroll down to the second part of the page, there's a strategy timeframe outlining the steps over a three-year period. And are we right in understanding that there was a very deliberate and conscious decision to have a strategy with a very tight timeframe?
Yes, the the strategy is for three years, so yes, there was a timeframe on it.
Then if we go down to the next part, there's five focus areas. So that is a summary of what follows in the strategy, which is a more sort of detailed overview of each of the five areas, is that right?
That's correct.
And are we right in understanding that the identification of the five focus areas came from the work of the task force and that broader consultation that was undertaken?
That's right.
Now, the task that your organisation has undertaken has been to review progress in relation to each of the focus areas, is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
And how have you gone about that task of ascertaining progress for each of the five focus areas?
So we've given you, I think, as well in one of the attachments, an update, actually, it was in the statement, an update on the activities that we've achieved and the things that we've done.
So this is, is this attachment a next to be to your statement?
That's correct, yes.
And a next to be sets out in a table form each of the action items that reflect each of the five areas. And the table sets out completion date of particular activities and what progress has been undertaken, is that right?
That's correct.
So one of the areas I wanted to ask you about was area number four, which is the confidence of employers to employ N D I S participants. And I want to ask you about that because one of the issues that the Royal Commission has heard from public hearing nine last year, but also in the course of this hearing, is that one of the fears that employers hold is will they be able to accommodate a worker with a disability? Or are they going to be able to work with a worker with a disability? So it came up in some evidence undertaken, sorry, it came up in some evidence that Comcare gave in relation to some research on something called the Employer Mobilisation Project as part of the collaborative partnership. Are you aware of that?
I'm not specifically aware about that initiative, but we are a member of the Comcare Collaborative Partnership. And so we do have people who attend those meetings and are participating in that.
Because the research coming out of the Employer Mobilisation Project, which the Royal Commission has heard about earlier this week, identified that fear or uncertainty about employing people with disability. So is this research that you've used to assess Focus Area Four and to take into consideration in measuring whether you're making any achievements in Focus Area Four?
So I think, I'm not sure about the timing of that from when we've reviewed. I'm not sure about the timing of that research and when that research came out, how recent.
That was in two thousand and eighteen that research came out. So before the work started for this strategy.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you. So, and so could you just ask the question again specifically?
So looking at Focus Area Four, which is the confidence of employers to employ N D I S participants. If N D I A is part of the collaboration partnership, step one. Secondly, we assume that as a member of the partnership, you're aware of the research that has been undertaken, step two. Step three is, how has that research informed the way in which you might, for example, measure progress on area number four? Let me put it simply, how do you measure increasing confidence of employers to employ N D I S participants?
We're not specifically measuring those at the moment. I think it is something that will continue to develop. So this is a three-year strategy. The front end of the strategy has very much been about building the capacity of the agency to support participants. And so that's kind of in this first half of the work has been about supporting participants in terms of building the confidence to for themselves to set economic participation and economic goals. And so therefore, at this point, that's the thing, those are the things that we are measuring much more concretely.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but now I think, Ms Mitra, you were frozen on the screen there. For a while, I think you've now come back. I'm sorry, I interrupted just as you came back, so please go ahead.
Okay, good, thank you. Did you miss much or?
No, you said, I think you said that the focus has been on building confidence in the participants.
That's right. And so we've done a lot of work to measure.
I think we're still having the same, I think we're having the same audio issues again.
It's more, it's both audio and visual, more visual. We might just, we might just adjourn for a couple of minutes just to see if this can be fixed. I'm sorry to interrupt Ms Mitra and Mr Mansfield, but we just adjourned for a couple of minutes and see if we can get this sorted out, thank you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Ms Eastman, we'll just have to see how we go with our technical problems. At the moment, we don't seem to have Ms Mitra on screen, but let's see, let's hear at least if we can actually hear Ms Mitra.
This is the operator from Law and Order. Ms Mitra should be with us in a few seconds' time.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Ms Mitra. We can see you and I hope we'll be able to hear you a little more clearly. I'll ask Ms Eastman to resume her questioning to you.
I think I may have referred to as Ms Mitra and I apologise if I've mispronounced your surname.
Yeah, no, that's all right, it's Mitra, but yeah, that's fine.
In that case, I apologise.
Thank you.
All right. So in the interest of preserving your connection, I might make these questions quite quick, if that's okay. So I was looking at Focus Area Four, which is confidence of employers.
Yes.
I think before we had the technical problems, you were saying that the focus has been on the first three areas of increasing confidence and developing the plans to support the participants, is that right?
That's correct. The first half of the strategy has been very much weighted towards that. And we've done a lot of work on being able to capture the right information so that tells us that participants' confidence is increasing and more people are putting economic goals into their plans. And then we can follow that up with supports in their plans. From our point of view, the the ability and the levers that we have under the Act to work directly with employers to build their confidence largely, I think, around ensuring that employers understand the supports N D I S participants may have to bring with them into the workplace. And so that kind of programme logic, if you like, is, will be and continues to be something we need to continue to work on about explaining when a participant is in employment, the kind of extra support beyond what might normally be expected is available to them.
On that front, in terms of supports, what percentage of the N D I S participants are receiving funding for customised supports for to participate in employment?
So we fund, we fund two, we fund several different types of supports. The core support of supports in employment, which at the moment is largely aligned to A D Es, and I know you don't want us to talk about those yet. That, there's about, I think it's something like sixteen thousand participants who are in A D Es who are receiving supports in employment.
My question is about the percentage of participants receiving funding for customised employment supports. You might have that figure overall, or you might be able to break that figure down between open employment and supported employment. Have you got those, that data?
I don't have that with me, it's something that we can make available. Because the second type of employment is capacity-building supports. And they are very much, there's a whole range of things that we could do. It could be things like extra support for transport. It could be support to find a different job if they're already in one job. It might be vocational assessment and training and so on. So there are a range of different activities and types of supports that we can give somebody. Some of them look like direct employment supports to help them find or do something different or build their capability in a different way. And some of them are more generally about their participation and their activities of daily living.
So coming back to Focus Area Four, when we look at the the six areas, there's two that are ongoing. The majority, there are three yet to be commenced, but one has been completed. but one has been completed and it's described as run the next ILC Economic Communication Participation Programme round. And that was completed in February this year. What is that?
So that's the ILC grant rounds, which has now transferred the accountability or for delivering those has now transferred to DSS. And Mr Mansfield, Mansfield may be able to provide further information on the detail for that. But that is effectively a round of grants to employers focused particularly on economic opportunities.
And do, do you know in terms of that work being completed, the identity of the employers who have received grants? And if so, can you tell us how many by percentage or otherwise are employers in open employment?
So that is one that I'll refer to Mr Mansfield again because the responsibility for that whole piece of work, those grants was moved on the NDA to DSS.
Just, I can hear the sounds getting a little bouncy again. So the final questions I want to ask you about concerning the profile of participants and an extra A to your statement sets out some information about the profile of participants by reference to gender, age group, Indigenous status and culturally and linguistically diverse status. So this is data collected by the NDA about the profile of participants, is that right?
That's correct.
And without taking you through the table in detail, can I assume that you're familiar with the contents of the table?
Yes, you can.
Are we right in understanding that in terms of men and women participants, that there are far fewer women participants in this strategy compared to the men? Would you agree with that?
Um, there are more males than females that would also represent. And in the scheme itself, there are more males than females.
Has there been any specific aspect of the strategy that has focused on the women participants and particular issues concerning women entering the labour force in paid employment?
Counsel, not to my knowledge at the moment, but as we progress with the strategy, those are the kinds of things we will use this data for to target particular areas. So there are some focus areas that are starting to arise as we examine the data.
The other area I wanted to ask you about was age. And are we right in understanding that there is a fairly strong focus on younger NDIS participants through this strategy in having younger participants into paid work? Is that right?
That's correct in the sense that we also have a specific support that we provide to young people if they're looking for work. The School Labour Employment Support Programme and, or it's not really a programme, it's a support. And that, that and the fact that we have many younger people now coming into the scheme. And so working with them to support their desire for an economic participation is a clear target for us that we are doing a lot of work on at the moment, yes.
At the previous hearing, the Royal Commission heard about one person whose father described his experience in trying to get employment as living in a cul-de-sac of neglect. And for many years he'd sought employment and it had been unsuccessful. So there seemed to be some additional barriers as people with disability got older and may not have had workplace opportunities. What, if anything, in this strategy addresses the impact of older NDIS participants who may have been in long-term unemployment? What does the strategy do to assist that cohort?
So I think in some ways it's similar. We are, once somebody has, chooses to put an economic goal into their plan, then the opportunity for them to receive supports is quite broad and those supports are individualised to their needs. So somebody older may, it may be more about vocational counselling and working through what the pathway is for them to achieve the things that they're looking for. And again, depending on how long the person's been in the scheme, there's opportunity to really invest in their supports for capacity building, building their confidence and all of the kinds of things that they would need to do in order to begin to actively engage in looking for work.
Has any part of this strategy sought to bring in the Australian Public Service Commissioner and his office to either seek advice or alternatively to work with his office in looking at employment opportunities?
I'm not, I'm not directly aware of that, Counsel. It is possible that some of my staff have been engaging directly with the commission, but I'm not aware of that myself.
Has this strategy been used by the NDA in its own recruitment practices?
Part of the strategy is very much about being a leader in this space and being able to demonstrate the way we operate. And so in that context, I think it is very much part of the way we think about and the way we operate in the agency.
Right. And, and just finally, how is this strategy going to be evaluated? And if the Royal Commission wanted to know in a year's time, what are the likely outcomes of this strategy? What would the Royal Commission be asking for?
So we have a couple of things. We are doing a lot more work on the data that's available, the outcomes data. And we have recently published more information about the kinds of employment outcomes we're seeing and the different behaviours and the different kinds of options and outcomes we're achieving. So I think that there will continue to be more data made available because we have a whole range of data available to us about different cohorts and how they're faring in the employment market and things that we can see. So I think that would be available. We also have our own research and evaluation branch starting to do some work specifically on different cohorts. Recently released some early information that we're looking at in terms of working with participants with autism, intellectual disability and psychosocial disability. So I think over the next eighteen months of the strategy, we'll continue to evaluate and look at the data that we're capturing and consider that in the broader research context.
The sound is not great, so I think if Chair, if the Commissioners have any questions for Ms Metra.
So you then come.
And then I'll, and then maybe we'll allow Ms Metra to be excused and then I'll come to Mr Mansfield.
Very well. Commissioner Galbally, do you have any questions of Ms Metra?
Um, no, no, thank you, no.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Ryan?
Um, just one small detail. You said that the responsibility for the ILC Economic Community Participation Programme round rests with DSS. Did the NDIS have anything to do with the allocation of those funds?
So we, because the responsibility for running those rounds moved across to DSS. I'm not sure if any of our staff were involved in, in fact, I think they possibly were. A good follow-up from Mr Mansfield as to whether or not any of our staff were involved in the evaluation process. I think it's quite possible that they would have been.
But the, the programme is entirely, I'm just wanting to make sure that we ask the right questions to the right person. Essentially, the hierarchical responsibility for the ultimate grants, the allocation of those grants rested with DSS, not the NDA.
It used to sit with the NDA and it's moved now across to DSS. And so that's where the, the process of allocating the grants and the funding for those now sits over in DSS.
The question I'm about to ask may be answered in your statement and I apologise if it is. How many NDIS participants are employed by the NDA?
By the agency itself or participants who are employed out in employment?
No, employed by the agency itself.
I, I don't actually have that directly with me. I know the percentage, I think, is around seventeen or eighteen percent, possibly. It was provided.
Not people with disability, participants in the NDA.
How many participants of the scheme who are employed by the agency?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry. I don't have that.
You don't know? All right, thank you.
I don't have that information available to me in front of me.
Thank you.
Um, excuse me, Chair, could I ask a question? I, I just found my. Um, look, I, I wanted to ask about the service providers who came to the roundtable and whether the NDA requires of service providers that they employ people with disabilities in open employment in their own structures? Whether there's any procurement requirement of those service providers to provide jobs for open employment as part of their, you know, including at all levels, including senior levels?
Yes, that's, we do have, for our partners in the community, we do have targets in their contracts for procurement and we are continuing to monitor those to see how they go against those. But it certainly is part of our procurement process is to request both information about how many people with disability are employed and to monitor that. So yes, that is a practice that we have.
I would appreciate having a look at that data if, if that could be on notice.
Yes, thank you. And I think there'll be a number of matters taken on notice that can be incorporated in arrangements between the legal representatives. So thank you very much, Ms Metra, for giving evidence and we'll allow you to go. And then, Mr Mansfield, thank you for waiting so patiently. I'll now ask Ms Eastman to put some questions to you.
Thank you. Mr Mansfield, you are the Acting Deputy Secretary Disability and Carers in the Department of Social Services.
That's correct.
And I think you told us a couple of weeks ago, that's a role that you've held since August this year.
Yes.
And you've prepared a statement for the Royal Commission dated twenty-six October?
Yes.
Are there any corrections to that statement?
Ms Eastman, if I may, paragraph sixty of my witness statement for this hearing details fifty-three projects funded under the Information Linkages and Capacity Building ILC programme with a focus on employment of people with disability. There are two further grants which would bring the total number from fifty-three to fifty-five. And I can arrange for information about those two grants to be provided to the Royal Commission.
And perhaps conveniently, that paragraph and that part of your statement deal with the questions that we've just addressed with Ms Metra in relation to DSS assuming this responsibility in relation to grants?
That's right.
That might be a convenient way of saying you've addressed that in your statement. Are there any other corrections or any other additions?
No other corrections or additions. Thanks, Ms Eastman.
And the content of the statement is true and correct?
Yes.
Now, Ms Catherine Rule, who was the former Deputy Secretary, prepared some material, including a statement for the Royal Commission on the fourteenth of July. And do we understand that you also adopt and rely on that statement as part of your evidence?
Um, my statement covers similar areas or the same broad areas as, as Ms Rule's statement. And I just familiarise myself with the information ahead of providing the witness statement that I've given.
Are you comfortable that any questions I ask refer to your statement rather than to Ms Rule's statement? But if there's anything in Ms Rule's statement that you want to draw to the Royal Commission's attention, can you let us know?
Yes, yes.
I hope that's a little easier than trying to sort of jump between multiple documents.
Thank you.
So a- as our final witness for this hearing, we thought it might be helpful to step back and to try to understand an overarching strategy from the Australian Government on increasing the opportunities and the employment for people with disability in Australia. And while we're focused on a number of quite specific areas, we thought stepping back and having a more global view of the strategy would be helpful. The starting point in that respect is the submission provided to the Royal Commission on the nineteenth of March, which was a submission in response to council assisting submissions in public hearing nine. At the time, we raised some concern that there was a lot of information and evidence, including in this submission that would need to be dealt with at a later hearing, which is now. So can I ask you, have you had a chance to read the nineteen March submission?
Yes, I have. I have.
And were you involved in any part of the drafting or providing instructions for that submission?
No, not to my knowledge. I don't believe I was involved in any way in that particular submission.
Are you authorised to, to talk about any aspect of the submission or to make any comment on the submission?
I'm happy for you to put questions to me and if, if I'm able to assist, I, I will.
Well, let's see how we go. And if it's not something you can answer, please let me know. So at public hearing nine, we identified a number of barriers and we divided them into four broad areas, attitudinal, physical, organisational and structural barriers. The submission provided by the Australian Government takes each of those barriers and provides information about whether it is a matter for the Commonwealth or whether is it, is it a matter for states or territories or employers themselves? And then the Commonwealth provides some examples of where the Commonwealth has responded. So am I right in understanding that's the approach taken in the submission?
That's my understanding.
So with respect to attitudinal barriers, the submission suggests that attitudinal barriers are largely matters for individual employers. And the Australian Government is currently developing a National Disability Employment Strategy to outline priority areas to increase employment outcomes for people with disability, which will address some of these issues. So it said that one of the key priority areas will be changing community attitudes. So that's paragraph nine of the submission. So my question on, on this response is, why should attitudinal barriers be viewed as largely matters for individual employers rather than a broader interest of the community?
So I think that attitudinal barriers that relate to the particular work setting of an individual employer, an employer is responsible for setting the culture within their own organisation. And so to that extent, barriers to employment of people with disability that relate to the culture of the organisation are matters for employers. In terms of the broader community, the National Disability Strategy recognises that the entire community, including all governments, contribute to the overall vision that people with disability can engage in all aspects of Australian society on an equal basis.
I'm not sure I understand that answer. Are you saying that the question of attitudes in the context of employment rests primarily with employers themselves to address?
I'm saying that there is a role for employers to examine their own culture and systems and strategies for providing a accessible and inclusive work. uh for providing a uh accessible and inclusive workplace for people with disability. Uh, as it is their, their uh uh obligation to set the culture for the environment for all people uh who are in their employ or who they may seek to employ. Uh, the Australian Government uh and all governments have a role to play in uh in helping to shape overall community attitudes um in relation to people with disability. Uh, and certainly the new Disability Employment Strategy uh does have a, a proposed priority area, which is referred to in my statement around lifting employer engagement capability and demand, um providing employers with the tools and abilities to competently hire, support and develop more people with disability.
Well, there's much of this submission that seems to suggest these are, these barriers are issues for the employers. And I want to understand whether, is it the Commonwealth's response that the starting point is the employers and the Commonwealth sort of sits behind in some way? Let me give you another example. On the question of physical and environmental barriers, paragraph seventeen says, "The Australian Government acknowledges the importance of accessibility to public buildings and workplaces for people with disability. While access to a particular employer's workplace is primarily a matter for those individual employers, the Australian Government notes the disability access to premises standards" and makes a, a reference to the requirements of the standards. And that seems like another example where the government's saying, well, this is a matter for individual employers, they've got to comply with the standards. There's, there's numerous examples. So if you're not familiar with this, tell me. But I get a very strong sense from working through this submission that the approach taken by the Commonwealth is to push back, to say, these are matters for the employers. Is that the intent of this, this submission?
Uh, I wouldn't agree that that's the intent of the submission. I, I, I think that the submission articulates those things that are within the direct purview of an individual employer to uh to control or influence. Uh, and uh the Australian Government and indeed um in some of these spaces that you're referring to, state and territory governments, um uh create the regulatory environment um and also uh influence through their policies and strategies uh and educate employers through their policies and strategies uh on how they can uh provide uh more accessible and inclusive workplaces.
Right. We, we asked you question two, to provide an overview of the Australian Government's roles, responsibilities and powers in relation to the employment of people with disability. And you've addressed this at paragraph ten and following on page two of your statement.
Yes.
So uh it would assist the Royal Commission to understand what the Australian Government sees as its responsibilities, separate from what seems to be the tenor of the submissions, that it's the employer's responsibility. So can I ask you about what you've said in response to question two?
Yes.
So what are the Australian Government's roles, responsibilities and powers in relation to the employment of people with disability?
Uh, so as set out in my statement, uh there are uh a range of uh services that the Commonwealth Government, the Australian Government, uh deliver to help all Australians, including people with disability, to find suitable employment in the open labour market. And there are three key agencies involved in doing that, including Department of Education Skills Employment, National Indigenous Australians Agency and the Department of Social Services. Um, and uh the, in relation to the Department of Social Services, the, in my statement, I set out the specific responsibilities of the department, including in relation to the Disability Strategy, uh twenty ten to twenty twenty and the development of the new strategy, the development of the new Disability Employment Strategy, Job Access Gateway Services, um the Continuative Support Programme, Disability Employment Services and the Information Linkages and Capacity Building Programme that was referred to earlier.
So we write in understanding that when we're looking at roles, responsibilities and powers, that the focus is on delivery of services and the promulgation of a range of different policies and strategies. Is that right?
Uh, that's right. In relation to the question asked, I think that's a fair summation.
Right. And would you agree with me that that's a form of soft regulation as opposed to a harder form of regulation that might arise by imposing mandatory requirements through law or otherwise?
Uh, I'd agree that it is, um, well, I'd agree that it, it is not regulating a specific requirement on employers to do particular things. Uh, although I note that the Disability Discrimination Acts do require people to do particular things.
Well, the Disability Discrimination Act requires an employer not to discriminate against a prospective employee or an actual employee. But it's not a law that requires anybody to employ a person with disability. It's only if you are going to do it, don't do it in a discriminatory way. So that's not a law that requires a person with disability to be employed. Do you agree with that?
I agree with that.
Right. We asked you in question three about the percentage of people with disability in the labour force being sort of stubbornly at numbers around fifty-three to fifty-four percent. And in fact, in two thousand and nine, the numbers of people or the percentage of people with disability in the labour force in Australia, these are people with disability of working age, was fifty-eight point four percent. And then we've seen a decrease, albeit by a small percentage point through to twenty eighteen. And we asked you to give us an overview of the reasons why there has not been an increase, but rather a decrease in the percentage of people with disability in the labour force. Now, looking at your answer there, is you've referred us to a number of reports, the Willing to Work Report.
Yes.
Build Employer Demand Report and some reports from the Australian Institute of Health and Welfare. But um, Mr Mansfield, can you help me? Where have you actually answered the question that we asked? And could you tell us, in the Australian Government's view, why has the percentage decreased rather than increased?
So I believe that I have outlined in my statement reasons why there, there uh uh some reasons um why there uh may not have been or why there has not been an increase in the percentage of people with disability in the labour force. Um, and indicated that there are a variety of uh complex factors that go to uh why people with disability are not in employment, including community attitudes, physical and environmental barriers, organisational barriers and structural barriers, and then.
But just pausing there, are they, is that intended to be a reference to the twenty-six barriers that the Royal Commission identified following public hearing nine or something different?
Uh, it, yeah, it is uh aligned to those uh matters.
Has the Commonwealth itself done any research in the Department of Social Services or those departments responsible for employment to undertake any analysis from the Commonwealth's perspective as to why the numbers have remained the same or decreased, albeit by a very small percentage point?
So in my statement at sixty-four uh B, it refers to the Building Employer Demand, Demand Literature, Literature Review and Research Report. Um, that was um commissioned by the department uh to try and understand and focus on the key drivers of employment barriers and the barriers that may deter employers from employing people with disability.
Yes, we've got that report, you've provided it to us. So is that government, that's the government's research?
Uh, the government commissioned that research, yes, the Department of Social Services commissioned that re.
And are you familiar with that report? You've got that in your material that you've provided to us. Is that a report that you've looked at?
Yeah, yes, I have, at a high level.
Can you tell um us uh what the findings of that report, if it's anything in addition to what you've set out on page thirteen, actually identifies the reason for the numbers of people with disability participating in the labour force not increasing? But I'm, I'm not sure that I see that in the report, so I'd be grateful if you could draw my attention to what are the reasons?
Uh, well, uh, there's nothing to add beyond what I've included at uh paragraph B to A to D. However, in terms of the the uh participation rate or employment outcomes of people with disability, um, one of the features as to um whether there, there are employment outcomes or not goes to um employers and the capabilities and competence of employers to hire people with disability and to create uh inclusive and accessible workplaces. Um, so to the extent that this report seeks to understand that aspect of um the issue better, uh it does go to understanding why those employment uh rates have not increased.
What, one of the findings of that report, was it not about what motivates open employers to hire people with disability was described as the moral imperative? And that, that there is a significance of morality and emotion motivating employers to employ people with disability? And that's squarely raising the issue around attitudes, is it not?
Uh, it does go to uh perceptions of employers uh as well as the benefits um o- 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 for, for employers uh in employing people with disability.
And has that research factored into the development of the National Disability Strategy? And then specifically the National Disability Employment Strategy?
Uh, yes. Um, so it was one of the reports that was um considered during the development of the National Disability Employment Strategy. And during the uh public consultation processes, which were quite extensive in relation to the next uh Disability Strategy, which is due to be um uh launched at the end of next week. Um, certainly employment issues arose as a significant uh area of focus of people with disability uh and um has been included as one of the areas for targeted action um under the new strategy. Uh, and uh of course is also part of the reason that the National Disability Employment Strategy, which is also um expected to be launched next week, has been developed.
Right. And in terms of um that matters taken into account, when you've referred to the report, you've included in your evidence, missing this is behind tab twenty-four, a two-page list of research. Have you got that?
Yes, I do.
And that sets up a sort of range of documents which might be sort of broadly described as information sheets at perhaps one end of the scale to some fairly detailed job evaluation material. For example, the Colmar Bruton Report. Are you aware of that report?
Uh, I'm aware, but I'm not personally familiar with the contents of that report.
Right. Uh, do you know how this list was compiled? And that might be unfair to you, Mr Mansfield, because I know you've only been in this role for a short time. Do you know how this list of the material that was taken into account was compiled?
Um, I wasn't directly involved in the compiling of the list. I'm aware that there is a team within uh the Department of Social Services that was charged with developing the Disability Employment Strategy. And as part of the process of doing that, uh there were a range of consultations. But there was also um e- effort to examine some of the key uh known reports that related to disability employment to gain a greater appreciation of some of the issues that stakeholders had raised. And um this research list reflects um that activity. Um, and of course, there, uh, there, there were um a range of uh internal discussions as part of the process of developing the Disability Employment Strategy around uh what, uh, what reports or, or information sources may be useful to better understand the issues.
There's a reference to the uh International Covenant on Economic, Social and Cultural Rights and a reference to the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities. Do you know how both those conventions were used in the research or the background to the National Disability Employment Strategy?
Uh, it's not within my direct knowledge, but my uh understanding would be uh that it would have been the team seeking to familiarise themselves in the context of developing the strategy. Uh, those uh parts of those conventions that go to employment uh and consideration of the links between those aspects that relate to employment and uh the approach taken to the strategy development and the content of the strategy.
And is this something that would fit into the matters that we addressed in a previous hearing around the role of D S S as the focal point? Is it related to that work or is it different?
Uh, it's related to that work to the extent that the same part of the department that's responsible as, as part of the focal point uh is in the same uh broad stream. Um, but certainly the, 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 the disability and carers stream, there's an area that is a coordination point in relation to, for example, providing input to the Attorney General's Department in preparation for um hearings um uh uh of the U N uh Committee. Um, but there's quite extensive um activities within that part of the department that go to trying to draw out the links between the Convention on Rights of People with Disability and our activities within the department.
So can I put this to you, it's somewhat surprising that there's no reference to the concluding observations made by the C R P D Committee or the committee charged with monitoring the International Covenant on Economic, Social and Cultural Rights as to the, as you know, the concerns that the committee might express in concluding observations about Australia's compliance with these conventions. There's no reference to that material in this list. Would we take it that it wasn't, that no one's turned their mind to those matters?
Sorry, Ms Eastman, for interrupting. Uh, no, that's not uh accurate reflection. Um, I'm aware that the concluding uh. Um, I'm aware that the concluding uh observations um in relation to uh uh the concluding observations were taken into account in terms of the development of the disability strategy, which is the overarching strategy. Uh, and uh a- and they've certainly been taken into account in the development of that strategy.
Com- Commissioner, I'm just mindful of the time. We've run over a little bit today. It's almost quarter past one. I've probably got another half an hour or so to go with Mr. Mansfield. I don't know whether subject to the witnesses' um convenience, whether it might be appropriate to have a break now? Or would you like me to press on? I'm just conscious I can see people are a little weary.
We'd better have the lunch break now. I don't think uh it's uh best for people who are working to continue. We've had a pretty long session this morning as it is. Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mansfield, that will mean that you will need to come back. It's now nearly one fifteen. I suggest we resume at two P M.
Yes.
And then, uh, Miss Eastman says she has about another half hour of questioning for you. And that will conclude, I think, the evidence at the hearing subject to the tender of any document.
Yes, so Commissioner, it's just, um, so you're aware of what remains is I want to turn to the particular strategies identified in Mr. Mansfield's statement with respect to the National Disability Strategy, the National Disability Employment Strategy, and then some questions, albeit brief, on job access, the Employment Assistance Fund, and a little bit about the government's response to the Willing to Work Report. So I hope I'll be able to get through all of those topics in half an hour.
We share your hope.
Thank you.
All right, we'll adjourn to talk.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. Commission is resumed.
Yes, Miss Eastman.
Thank you. I'm not sure Mr. Mansfield's here yet.
Mr. Mansfield, I think we can say, Mr. Mansfield, thank you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, I'll I'll ask Miss uh Eastman to resume her question.
Mr. Mansfield, at paragraph fifteen of the statement, you set out a range of strategies and policies. And I want to examine a few of those policies with you now. So can we start with the National Disability Strategy twenty ten to twenty twenty? Uh, we write in understanding that a new policy will be released next week.
Uh, that's right, Miss Eastman, so.
And will that be a new, will that be a new ten-year policy?
Yes, it will.
And are you able to tell us at this stage uh how that policy will measure progress? For example, the publication of progress reports? Will that be a part of the new policy?
So wh- what I can tell you is that during the consultation process, um, there was.
Just sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Mansfield.
Yes.
I am sure that you want to minimise the amount of time that you appear in the Royal Commission. So could I just ask you to direct your answers to the question that I asked? I haven't asked you about consultation.
Uh, yes, what what I was going to say is that there was a particular discussion paper that set out the features that the that all governments were intending to uh put in place as part of the new disability strategy. And uh those features included, um, for example, um, targeted action plans, um, a outcomes framework with clear indicators around system performance and annual reporting on various indicators and population outcomes, uh, and an intention to have a data improvement plan to collect more data around people with disability over time. Um, so.
So you haven't mentioned, you haven't mentioned in that list a progress report, and that's what I was asking you about.
Uh, and annual reporting uh will be included as part of the new disability strategy.
Right, thank you. So notwithstanding that the new strategy, Mr. Hodges on the screen. I'm not sure, Mr. Hodge, if you have something you wish to say.
Just going to indicate, I'm I'm sure you'll ask about this, but I think there might be a slight one of the issues you might be having in terms of the questions you're now going to ask are, is going to be about what Mr. Mansfield is able to talk about that's public information and what it is that's information that's subject to cabinet in confidence. So.
I'm sure Mr. Mansfield will be able to answer the question, and I have no interest in asking any further questions about a policy that we do not know anything about and probably will not know about till next week. Does that give you a degree of comfort, Mr. Hodge?
Yes, I was just trying to help you, Miss Eastman.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Mr. Mansfield, can I go back to the previous policy? So the previous strategy, which uh notionally ended in twenty twenty, but it's had an ongoing life, has it not, pending the new strategy being released?
That's correct.
One of the areas of focus in the previous strategy was on economic participation, and it was described as economic security in the old strategy. Is that right?
Uh, yes.
And the uh previous strategy identified, if you've got a copy at page forty six, Commissioner, you'll find this behind tab twenty eight, identified areas for future action. This takes us back to twenty ten, is that right?
Can I just check the page number you referenced, Miss Eastman?
Six. If you're using the Royal Commission coding, it's C T D dot five thousand dot zero zero two dot two nine eight two. That's in the top right-hand corner.
Thank you, Miss Eastman.
So in twenty ten, there were eight areas for future action in relation to economic security. Do you agree?
Uh, yes.
And the first four concern employment. Is that right?
Uh, yes.
And the first item was to improve employer awareness of the benefits of employing people with disability. And then that followed about such matters as reducing barriers and disincentives. Is that right?
Yes.
Now, in terms of the way in which this strategy operated, is that there were implementation, sorry, there were implementation plans, is that right?
Uh, that's correct.
So there was a more detailed planning uh in relation to these identified areas?
Yes.
And I think you've provided to us a number of the implementation plans i- as part of your evidence. Is that right?
That that's right.
And the other um aspect of this strategy was the publication of progress reports. And it's right, isn't it, that the most recent progress report is twenty sixteen?
Yes.
And in your statement, you have said at paragraph ninety six that monitoring and reporting progress is vital to ensure uh improving the life of people with disability. I'm paraphrasing what you've said in paragraph ninety six. But essentially, you recognise that monitoring and reporting progress was an important um tool. Is that right?
Uh, yes, I did.
So can you tell the Royal Commission with respect to the National Disability Strategy covering the period twenty ten to twenty twenty, why there are no reports following twenty sixteen?
Um, so in relation to the reporting periods, a decision was taken uh in twenty nineteen to combine those two reports um and to um provide a final report covering those periods after the conclusion of the strategy. And there are a number of factors that, I understand, went to that decision-making process, although I wasn't here at that time. Um, one of those factors went to the timing of data availability, so the uh SDAC, um which goes to, which is one of the key data sources for a number of um uh matters related to disability. Uh, it occurred in twenty eighteen, data was available in twenty nineteen. Um, and uh a- and then there was obviously following twenty nineteen, in twenty twenty, early twenty twenty, um, the the pandemic occurred. Um, but in terms of the intention, the intention is to still provide a report in relation to those periods. Um, but there has been a focus over that time to uh develop the new strategy, including to address the feedback in relation to um those reporting, um at those those reports from the original strategy. Um, one of one of which was uh that there was a view that there was reporting on activity, um, but not sufficient reporting that went to outcome. Uh, and that's why the new strategy um seeks to have a uh a- an outcomes framework with ambitious measures uh or indicators as part of that framework, and that was subject to extensive consultation.
Can I just bring, can I bring you back to my question?
Yes.
To us simply why there've been no reports in twenty sixteen. Do I take from your answer?
You mean since?
Since twenty sixteen, that, do I take from your answer that that's a combination of data, COVID and a a decision made somewhere in government not to produce any reports since twenty sixteen? Is that right?
It, so the twenty sixteen report was published in, my understanding is twenty nineteen. Uh, and then a decision was taken for uh reasons relating to uh data, um, the sequencing of actions under the implementation plans, which often crossed periods, um, cross cross the reporting periods, um, leading to duplication. The focus in relation to the development of the new disability strategy um uh to ensure that that was um going to um uh uh achieve um the goals that it set out to achieve, as well as um COVID. Uh, my understanding, the the key reasons for uh the decision to um not report on those periods until after the existing strategy is completed.
Will there be a report?
Uh, that that's the intention as as per my statement, uh, that there will be a final report.
And will that report be uh publicly available before the new strategy commences?
Uh, not before the new strategy commences, uh, wh- which is commencing next next week. Uh, it will be after that period.
Has the report been prepared yet?
Uh, it it has not been uh concluded, the preparation has not been concluded. Um, and uh i- it's intended that it would be um prepared uh during the course of, or final finalisation of the preparation would occur during the course of next year.
In the absence of any reports on progress, how can you be confident that the new disability strategy, we don't know what's in it, is uh going to be a strategy that the community can have confidence in if it does not know how the government has sought to evaluate the previous strategy through, for example, the publication of progress reports?
Uh, so one of the, I mentioned that one of the limitations on the existing strategy in terms of the reporting uh that was used is that it was reporting on um activities and not uh always reporting on outcomes. And the reason that I think that um people with disability can have confidence in the new strategy is that it's been developed very, very closely with people with disability. They expressed through two very detailed consultation processes what they expected to see in the strategy, uh, including in relation to um stronger um reporting, stronger accountability of all governments, um, uh, targeted action plans uh in which include five areas, employment, safety, early childhood, community attitudes, emergency management. They wanted to see an advisory council um that that uh that would um hold governments to account. And um uh they wanted to see uh clearer information about the roles and responsibilities of each level of government as part of the process, and all of those features have been built into the design of the new strategy. Uh, and that that is why um I'm confident that um i- i- it will be well received and will focus in the areas that um people with dis- disability care about.
Would you accept this proposition that reporting on activity and reporting on outcomes are not mutually exclusive? And there is still a value in reporting on what activities have been undertaken?
Uh, I I agree that they're not mutually exclusive, and I agree that there is value on reporting on those activities. And I've indicated that that will occur um uh during the course of next year is the intention.
All right, can I move to the next strategy, which is a National Disability Employment Strategy? And you've touched on this at paragraph twenty four of your statement and then picked up in more detail at paragraph one hundred and fifty.
Yes.
So are we right in understanding that the Department of Social Services is developing a National Disability Employment Strategy?
Yes, that's right.
And this is different to the National Disability Strategy that will be released next week?
Uh, that's right. It's it's um described as a associated plan. Um, so the National Disability Strategy is the highest level. It's actually what we call the Australian Disability Strategy twenty twenty one to twenty thirty one. And uh it's the um national strategy um that has been agreed by all governments at the highest level. Uh, and it will guide uh overall um action and effort across all governments um in relation to um disability. Uh, and it will uh have a vision that's consistent with the vision within the current strategy. The National Disability Employment Strategy is an associated plan, and the best way that I would describe it is it seeks to put more uh granular effort around employment because of how important um it is to people with disability. Uh, and um uh it it too will be a ten-year uh strategy. Uh, and uh it will have um a proposed uh priority areas within that strategy go to lifting employer engagement, building employment skills and competence of young people, improving service systems and changing community attitudes.
You've described in the statement the process for drafting the National Disability Employment Strategy and some of the um matters touching on the consultation and design. Can I ask you this? Has the National Disability Employment Strategy been finalised?
Uh, yes, it has. Uh, i- it.
And when will it be released?
It it's intended that it will be released, um, my understanding, on the same day that the Australia Disability Strategy will be released, which is third of December.
So this strategy will be released at the same time as the National Disability Strategy next Friday. Is that right?
That's the intention.
Okay. Um, are you able to uh tell us anything more about the content of the National Disability Employment Strategy beyond the contents of your statement?
Um, I can talk to the consultation process, um, but uh a- a- and can talk about the next steps following the strategy um at a high level, um, but uh not more in relation to content of the strategy. Um, but other than to indicate that it's um consistent with what's already in my statement.
On consultation, can you tell the Royal Commissioners whether there has been consultation with the Australian Public Service Commissioner and any of the state and territory public sector commissioners?
Um, in relation to the development of this strategy, um, to my knowledge, no, not specifically, um.
Has there been, right, no to that. Has there been? Has there been any direct consultation with the Australian Chamber of Commerce and Industry and or the Business Council of Australia?
Um I'll have to provide information to you, Miss Eastman. I'm aware that there has been discussion with, for example, um Aki um as part of this process, and there's certainly been engagement with uh some industry groups and large employers. I just don't have in my head exactly who I'm I'm afraid.
Right. Would would any of those bodies who you think but not in your head have seen the draft strategy? In the strategy in a draft form?
Um there has been a process to seek views from large employers, whether they would be prepared to, from from a number of large employers, whether they would be prepared to endorse the strategy. Um and um my understanding is that some employers came back indicating that they would be prepared to endorse the strategy. Um this is quite recently, is my understanding. Um and uh that arrangements were being made to provide an embargoed copy of the strategy uh to them, um although I'm not entirely certain whether that has occurred or or not at this point. Uh but certainly there were, sorry.
Has there been consultation with the ACTU?
Uh I can't tell you the answer to that question. I I will have to provide that information to to separately.
Has there been consultation with the Fair Work Ombudsman?
Um no, uh.
Has there been consultation with Safe Work Australia?
To my knowledge, no.
Has the strategy been provided to the collaborative partnership?
Um not to the collaborative partnership, uh but the, yeah. But but possibly some members of the collaborative partnership. I wou- I would have to provide information about that.
Uh but uh my question really is directed to that combined group described as a collaborative partnership. So the answer to that is no, is that right?
That is right.
Uh so are we right in understanding that what you can tell us is that there will be annual reporting in relation to the National Disability Employment Strategy? Am I right in understanding that?
The National Disability Employment Strategy is um an overarching strategy uh from which initiatives will be developed. Um reporting around those initiatives is likely to be part of reporting under Australia's Disability Strategy, um which will have a targeted action plan in relation to employment.
Can you tell us, can you tell us whether the National Disability Employment Strategy will quit include targets or quotas for both the private sector employers and the public sector employers to meet? Is that something you can tell us or we have to wait till next week?
Um so the the strategy doesn't um uh specify particular initiatives or levers at the level that I think you're describing, Miss Eastman. Um the intention is that following the launch of the strategy, that work will be done with employers, with industry groups, um and quite possibly with um many of the organisations that you have asked me about in terms of the development of the strategy. Um um develop up particular initiatives that go to the priority areas. So that's the intention in terms of next steps. And there was a Disability Employment Advisory Committee established explicitly for uh this uh process, which includes the Disability Discrimination Commissioner, uh uh um a number of people with disability, uh disability representative organisations, some um employers.
Are you able to tell us whether the strategy will identify any particular areas of law reform? For example, amendments to the Disability Discrimination Act, the Australian Human Rights Commission Act and or the Fair Work Act?
Uh so uh I think in reference to my previous answer, the strategy doesn't go down to that level of granularity around particular levers or initiatives or um actions that will be taken in relation to this. It's it's an overarching strategy that gives a um indication of the areas of effort um that that um uh and priority that will be applied by the Australian Government in relation to disability employment.
Some of the other strategies you referred to in your statement uh include job access and the Employment Assistance Fund. Uh on the assumption that these strategies and initiatives will be ongoing. Uh one issue which has arisen in the course of the hearing this week is the extent to which employers are aware of the Employment Assistance Fund. And if we look at the employers who, from the private sector, who participated in the hearing this week, only four out of twelve of the private sector companies referenced the use of the Employment Assistance Fund to fund reasonable adjustments. Do you think there is a need to raise awareness among the private sector employers in open employment to know about the Employment Assistance Fund?
So there are already activities uh ongoing in that area. But I I do think that there is more that um can be done and uh should be done to raise employer awareness in relation to the Employee Assistance Fund.
Is there any proposal to act on the evaluation undertaken by Colmar Bruton in the evaluation of job access to the extent that that touched on the operation of the Employment Assistance Fund?
Um I just can't recall the detail in relation to that, uh, Miss Eastman. Um I I certainly know that there is an intention um following the conclusion or following the launch of the um Disability Employment Strategy um to examine job access, um which includes the Employee Assistance Fund within it and uh look at um ongoing ways that that those services can be improved.
Right. Are are you familiar with the Colmar Bruton review, the Evaluation of Job Access Service Report commissioned by the department and published in July twenty nineteen?
Uh I'm aware of its existence, but not its content.
Right. I don't think that's included in any of the documents you provided to the Royal Commission. And we haven't asked you to respond directly to it. But you have included the Willing to Work Report as part of your evidence. And to what extent uh has or will the government consider recommendations from the Willing to Work Report with respect to the Employment Assistance Fund? Is that something you can tell us about?
Um I can't tell you specifically about um what decisions will be taken in relation to particular, uh um in in relation to the Employee Assistance Fund. That would be a matter for government, uh and government would be provided advice in relation to any changes to the Employee Assistance Fund, um provided it's not within the existing scope of the services. Um so I can't, I can't provide you any detail on that today.
Thank you. Another initiative is the National Disability Recruitment Coordinator. And you've addressed that initiative at paragraph thirty one of your statement. And you have provided information to the Royal Commission about the National Disability Recruitment Coordinator. Uh is there any proposal for the government to expand the work of the National Disability Recruitment Coordinator to better open up opportunities in open employment in the private sector?
Uh there's certainly an intention to, as part of implementation of the Disability Employment Strategy and initiatives underneath that, to look at the National Disability Recruitment Coordinator. Um no decision has been taken in relation to um any expansion or change to the um services under that umbrella description. Um but certainly it is something that has been looked at.
Another initiative is the Complaints Resolution and Referral Service. And you've addressed this at paragraph thirty six of your statement and following.
Yes.
Are we right in understanding that that is a a a form of dispute resolution service? But its application is limited to those working in Australian disability enterprises or people who are receiving services from Disability Employment Services, the DES providers, is that right?
Uh yes, uh and also advocacy services. But yes, those three categories of service, yes.
The Royal Commission's heard over the course of this week that for some employees with disability, being able to resolve complaints or raise concerns with their employers can be very difficult. And I think Ms Banks uh identified in her evidence that her research has identified that people with disability sometimes want to have dispute resolution assistance that doesn't require them going to the Australian Human Rights Commission or to another agency. Has there been any consideration of expanding the Complaints and Resolution Service beyond the segregated employment settings into open employment?
Uh I'm not aware of any consideration uh of that personally.
Uh I'm getting close to my final questions. Uh and one relates to the collection of data and the issue around disclosure of a person's disability in the workplace. I think you're aware, are you not, that in terms of what the HR records might record in terms of an employee with disability is not always the same, invariably not the same, as when a census might be undertaken and a person can choose to disclose their disability on an anonymous basis. So we have a a data collection processes which don't really give us an accurate account of the number of people with disability in Australian workplaces. One of the recommendations from Willing to Work was to expand the program that exists in relation to the collection of data of women in the workplace to include disability. That's recommendation twenty six from Willing to Work. Are you able to tell the Royal Commission whether there has been any consideration in expanding the data collection and reporting processes that exist for gender equality through the Gender Equality Agency to disability, to the area of disability?
Uh I'm not personally aware, but I'm happy to, oh, sorry, I I'm, if it would assist, I can see whether there's been any uh consideration of that and prov- provide information to the Commission.
Would would you agree that if we reflect on the broad overarching policies on improving improving labour force participation of people with disability in Australia, that accurate data is critical to both assessing the effectiveness of these various strategies, but also to help in the planning in the future as to what needs to be done to continue to increase and also retain uh people with disability in the workforce?
I agree that data generally is important and helpful in informing um policy approaches, um uh programme design and services. Uh if your question is directed specifically at the data that you referred to in the previous question, uh 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 I would not um limit it or constrain uh the data to to that particular type of data.
Right. My final question is this, that we've noticed that there's recently been a publication called New Disability Employment Support Model. And submissions are due by the fourth of January twenty twenty two. Can you tell the Royal Commission what the purpose of a new disability employment support model is? And I know it's only a consultation paper at this stage. And how does that fit into the uh two strategies? The National Disability Strategy and the National Disability Employment Strategy that we will see next Friday?
Uh so that refers to, there's currently a disability employment service. Uh that service, uh the current um arrangements for that um conclude uh in thirty June twenty twenty three. The government announced in twenty twenty one, twenty two that it had an intention to um uh effectively redesign that program um ahead of uh the existing contractual arrangements concluding. Uh and so that's what that consultation paper refers to. Um and um i- it was also a recommendation that fell within the midterm review of the DES programme that was undertaken and uh completed in uh, I believe, August twenty twenty. Um and uh in terms of how it fits within those uh strategies, one of the areas, the priority areas that I mentioned within the Disability Employment Strategy is around improving the systems and services for job seekers and employers. And in that context, um this consultation process and the and the development of a new disability employment services model um would seek to um uh improve those systems and services for job seekers and employers.
So this is uh not a a consultation process relevant to open employment, but a matter that we might come back to you on when we hold a hearing early next year, looking specifically at the DES system and employment services. Is it relevant to those issues rather than open employment?
Uh no, it's it's relevant to open employment. So the new disability employment services model uh relates to open employment.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Um Commissioner Galblie, do you have any questions of Mr Mansfield?
Um thank you, Mr Mansfield. I I'd like to ask whether you have any um conditions attached to grants of all kinds that DSS makes available, that people with disabilities must be employed um to a certain number as part, or even that there's a disability, that there's an employment plan that's lodged with the grant application, including ILC grants. Do you require that of grant applicants and definitely of recipients?
Uh I'm not aware personally that we do. I know with, for example, Disability Employment Services, there's a requirement consistent with the Disability uh Services Act um to um meet certain requirements uh around uh understanding how to support people with disability. Uh but that doesn't extend to uh a requirement for actual employment of people with disability. But I I will uh check that to see whether there are any um examples of that within, for example, uh ILC. I'm just not personally aware.
Um and and it's not specifically ILC I'm asking. And I'm ask, I'd also like to know the dollar amount of all the grants you give out um to. And um so my second question is around our position on the OECD um ladder of employment where we perform fairly poorly. Um have you gathered information from other in jurisdictions, other countries about um their strategies for to employ people with disabilities, to learn from those for the strategy that we're seeing next week? Have they been drawn upon?
I'm aware in the context of the uh new disability employment services model uh that is subject subject to a consultation paper at the moment. My understanding is that there has been uh some uh preliminary work to look at the uh model that is in place in the UK. Um uh but I'm not personally aware about um other countries and uh examination of their systems and processes and strategies um and adoption in 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 terms of our thinking for the new disability strategy. Uh that's not to say it hasn't occurred, I'm just not personally aware aware of that um.
Yeah, I appreciate if you could check that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Wright, just one point of clarification, Mr Mansfield. You might remember earlier in your evidence, in paragraph sixty in your statement, you referred to ILC grants, the Grants Programme, to employers. And I think you corrected the number from fifty-three to fifty-five. What I wasn't sure is to whether you undertook to give the Royal Commission a list of who received those funds so that we could make an assessment as to which sectors of the employment would be impacted by those. Will you provide a list of those grants, even if it were a quest for confidentiality, if that's necessary, but I think the Royal Commission would like to see the list?
Yes, I can undertake to provide that.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Yes, thank you very much. Mr Hodge, do you have any questions of Mr Mansfield? This is not an invitation, it's just an inquiry.
I don't know. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. In that case, Mr Mansfield, thank you very much for your evidence and the statement that you have provided. And we look forward to the publication next week of the Australian Disability Strategy 2021 to 2030 and the National Disability Employment Strategy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Ms Eastman, is there anything further that you need to have done now?
I just need to tender some additional documents.
And are they covered in the document that's just been handed to me?
It is.
Which is headed PH nineteen day five, Documents to be Tendered at the Conclusion of Overarching Government Strategy Panel. If that's the case, then I will initial that document and date it with today's date. And the documents that are identified in that document will be admitted into evidence with the exhibit of numbers that are recorded therein.
Thank you, Chair. I don't wish to say anything by way of closing. I think probably everyone's heard enough from me this week. But we have circulated some draft directions to the parties with leave, and we've provided to you a copy of the proposed.
And as far as you're aware, there are no issues relating to these proposed directions?
As far as I'm aware, no, there's not.
All right. Well, I'll go through the directions that are proposed. And if at the end of what I have said, anybody has any comment, that is, any legal representative has any comment, then they could make it at that point. So I won't actually make the directions until I've given that opportunity.
Chair, can I just, as I understand it, that we have endeavoured to ensure that any comments from any of the legal representatives have been accommodated in the date set out here?
Even so, I'll read it and then we'll see if there's any issue, but on the basis of what you have said, I'd be very confident there is. One, any witness who took questions on notice during public hearing nineteen should provide any answers in writing to the Office of Solicitor assisting the Royal Commission by five PM Australian Eastern Daylight Time on three December 2021. Those answers should be targeted and concise and not address additional or unnecessary matters. Two, counsel assisting the Royal Commission will consider any additional material produced and determine if any additional steps need to be taken. And by five PM Australian Eastern Daylight Time on ten December 2021, counsel assisting will tender into evidence whatever additional material she considers appropriate. Three, counsel assisting the Royal Commission will prepare written submissions following this hearing by five PM Australian Eastern Daylight Time on twenty December 2021. These submissions will be provided on a confidential basis to parties with leave to appear. Four, any responses to counsel assisting submissions should be sent to the Office of the Solicitor Assisting by five PM Australian Eastern Daylight Time on seven February 2022. Those responses should be concise and should not include any additional evidence. If any party seeks to participate in making oral submissions, they should notify the Office of the Solicitor Assisting at the same time. Five, after receiving all of the written submissions, there will be a short hearing for oral submissions which will be scheduled for ten AM Australian Eastern Daylight Time on ten March 2022. Just before I ask if there are any comments on that, I take it, Ms Eastman, that there'll be coordination between the Office of Solicitor Assisting and counsel to the extent necessary, and the legal representatives of the party to settle upon those matters upon which further information is required.
Yes, there certainly will. We've tried to do that during the course of the week, but we'll make sure that there's no confusion as to what's required. And we've indicated that if people have difficulty meeting those directions, to let us know, and we'll try to address any concerns on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you very much. Is there any comment that any representative party wishes to make on the directions, draft directions that I've read out? If not, then they are the directions that I make. And I understand that the parties have copies and they therefore will be aware of the time limits that have been expressed in the directions. Can I just make some reasonably brief closing comments? First, I wish to thank all the witnesses who have provided statements or have given oral evidence or both. Like most of our five-day hearings, this public hearing has covered an enormous amount of ground. We have heard from a total of forty-one witnesses. This is in addition to thirty-five witnesses who gave evidence of public hearing nine. And a very large amount of documentation has been admitted into evidence. We have heard from former or current discrimination commissioners, Mr Innocent, Ms Banks, who explained the barriers to labour force participation of people with disability and offered some practical suggestions as to how those barriers might be broken down. Ms Masella of the Aboriginal Employment Strategy addressed measures to improve the inclusion of First Nations people in the labour force. Ms Ryan gave evidence today about her proposals for change, including, as she explained, discarding the traditional concept of merit for selecting staff. We also heard today from the Fair Work Ombudsman, Ms Parker, about the ombudsman's responsibilities for protecting workers with disability and the actions her office can take against employers by or on behalf of workers. Yesterday, we heard from Ms Howie and Ms Matthews, who explained the functions of the Victorian Equal Opportunity and Human Rights Commission and the significance of a statutory standalone right to reasonable adjustments, particularly when performing their conciliation role under the Equal Opportunity Act of Victoria. On Tuesday, seems quite a while ago, we heard the perspective of big union bodies from Mr Connelly, the Assistant Secretary of the ACTU, and Ms Donnelly of the CPSU. They were followed by Ms Westercott's very helpful evidence on behalf of the Business Council of Australia. Among other issues, Ms Westercott stressed the importance of collecting data and addressed the reasons why some employers are reluctant to record the disability status of their employees. We then heard from numerous private and public sector employers. Evidence has been given by representatives from the National Australia Bank, McDonald's, Kmart, Woolworths, Accenture, IBM, Services Australia, the RMIT, Telstra, Medibank, Lend Lease and Australia Post. Public sector employees which have been represented and whose representatives have given evidence include the Australian Taxation Office, the National Disability Insurance Agency and the Department of Social Services. One of the panels comprising representatives from IBM, Telstra and Services Australia gave evidence of programs introduced by some private sector employers actively to recruit neurodiverse people. Another panel comprising witnesses from McDonald's, the NAB, Accenture and the RMIT gave evidence about the reasonable adjustments requirement from the perspective of private employers. The third panel comprising the Australian Taxation Office, the NDIA and the Department of Social Services addressed the same issue from the perspective of public sector organisations. This morning, we heard from Ms Mitra about the strategy for increasing the proportion of NDIS participants in paid employment. We've just heard from Mr Mansfield about the National Disability Employment Strategy and the Australian Disability Strategy for 2021-2030. We've heard from the Australian Public Service Commissioner, the Victorian Public Sector Commissioner and the Northern Territory Office of Commissioner for Public Safety, all of whom explained the approach that has been taken in each of their jurisdictions to the collection of data, the recruitment and promotion of people with disability and the effectiveness of complaint mechanisms. A panel comprising representatives from Safe Work Australia, WorkSafe Victoria and CommCare discussed the relationship between work, health and safety obligations and the right of people with disability to seek and retain employment. I'm not going to, of course, attempt to summarise the very large body of evidence we have received. It is, however, quite clear that the employers whose representatives gave evidence, public and private employers, have committed themselves to ensuring that workplaces are accessible to people with disability, that people with disability receive the adjustments and support to which they are entitled throughout the employment cycle, that workplaces should become more inclusive for people with disability, and the policy should be designed to increase labour force participation by people with disability and to provide people with disability with fair opportunities for advancement and promotion. It's equally clear from the evidence that some employers are much further advanced in this project than others. To use the colloquial expression which got a fair run during this hearing, some walk the walk as well as talk the talk, others may just talk the talk. It's become apparent that the gap between data on employees with disability recorded in their HR systems and the data compiled as the result of anonymous surveys raises some important issues. We heard different explanations for the reluctance of people with disability to identify as such to their employers. The gap between self-identification by name and self-identification anonymously is a significant question and warrants careful consideration in the context of employers reporting on the success of their strategies and where targets are adopted, making progress towards achieving those targets. I expect, as Ms Eastman has indicated, that there will be an opportunity for the Royal Commission to seek updates from employers to determine whether they are indeed walking the walk. This will be done, at least in part, by the Royal Commission holding what we'll describe as wrap-up hearings in the early part of 2023. And some organisations that have given evidence at this hearing may be asked to return and tell us about progress in the intervening period. I wish also to take this opportunity to thank most sincerely everybody at the Royal Commission who has contributed to preparing and conducting this hearing, making the logistical arrangements, actually conducting the hearing, providing the IT in real-time transcript and translating the evidence into Auslan, always a challenging undertaking. One reason for my having referred to the nature and extent of the evidence of this hearing is to demonstrate, once again, just how much work goes into preparing and conducting a hearing such as this. Each one of the hearings that we conduct presents a similar challenge to our staff and to counsel assisting. The Commissioners owe a great debt to everyone who has been involved in preparing this public hearing nineteen. We are especially grateful to counsel assisting, Ms Eastman FC, Ms Bennett FC and Ms Dalcent. I am sure they would be the first to acknowledge that they could not have performed their role as they have done without the painstaking and thorough preparation by staff from the Office of Solicitor Assisting and by staff from other branches of the Royal Commission. The next public hearing of this Royal Commission is public hearing twenty. This will continue the Royal Commission's examination of the role and responsibility of disability service providers to prevent and respond to violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability. That hearing, which is to commence on seven December 2021, will focus on two case studies from group homes managed by life without barriers. One of those homes is in northern New South Wales and one is in Melbourne. The first hearing next year, public hearing twenty-one, will continue the Royal Commission's examination of employment of people with disability. Public hearing twenty-one will be held from twenty-one to twenty-five February 2022. It will consider the experiences of people with disability engaging with Disability Employment Services, DES, and working in Australian Disability Enterprises, ADE. The Royal Commission will examine potential issues of exploitation and neglect within the DES system. We will also examine the operation of ADEs and the treatment of people with disability working in ADEs and whether this form of employment may lead to neglect and exploitation of people with disability. We will also be looking at the experiences of and potential increased risk of violence and abuse towards people with disability in these settings. And our inquiries will extend to how segregated employment has an impact on inclusion in other areas of life for people with disability. Again, I thank everybody who has been involved in this hearing and particularly those responsible for preparation and conduct of the hearing. We will now adjourn, and the next hearing, as I have indicated, will commence on the seventh of December 2021.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.